Well, it's seven o'clock. That's called as meeting in order. And let's do the pledge to the flag.
Pledgeance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The agenda changes. We kind of do have one change the agenda. Mike did the annual report and that's not in here and he did a great job on that. We just wanted to mention that.
I had one other thing just for clarification that the septic system we have on our new business. That's technically old business. Wouldn't change the order all. We've discussed that before.
Okay.
And that was in the report too. You can see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Mike. Any other changes? I need public comment at this time. No public comment. Okay. We do need a approval of the minutes of our last meeting. You have a second?
You can still second.
Okay. Any all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you. Um, current.
Can we do the annual report right now? Just approve it?
Sure, we can.
Just, I did get a couple minor things. I made your correction.
Mm hmm.
And then I also made the correction that Greg did to add a word in on the um, just grammatic thing. So I actually had an, I've made it an approved version. So with that, I'd make the motion that we pass your report for 2024 as, as is.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Mike, thank you. Did a great job on that.
Yeah, that was a nice job.
A lot of work in that. Thank you.
That was a lot of work. I'm kidding. We had, we were busy last year. So thank you for all your hard work. That was good job. Just give me a minute to write that up.
Yeah, I'm good.
Um, the current and ongoing business. We have a review for the site planned for the telesite communication tower located at nine, five, six, five North Cut Road. Um, Jane Ossling is the owner. Um, the parcel number seven, two, zero, zero, four, zero, fifteen, zero, zero, eight, zero, three, two, zero. And our first article is fourteen dash fifteen of the zoning ordinance. Did you want to talk about that? Come on up. Hello, if you could push that mic button, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Rob Label. I'm the consultant zoning consulting for White Rock. Uh, with me is.
Yeah, I'm Plodding Bushway. I am with TeleSite Wireless.
I'm Saton with TeleSite Wireless.
Okay.
And TeleSite Wireless is the site acquisition specialist for White Rock and trying to determine, find sites for them like this.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed your name again, the spelling.
Rob Label, L A B E L L. Uh, so we're here, here tonight because we were told that this would be sort of an informal meeting tonight to discuss what we're proposing. The actual formal planning commission meeting in which there would be a discussion and our, and vote, we hope on the special land use and the site plan would be at a subsequent meeting of the planning commission. And from there we go to the township board, just trying to confirm our product.
Okay, so you're saying this is the sketch plan review, I guess is referred to that or the preliminary?
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's what we understood. I'm not sure what the terminology.
Yeah, that's we have, we have a sketch plan, which is like an informal thing. That's when you said that where you could just come in here and not pay an application fee and say, here's what it is. Here's overthinking and doing that.
We paid the application fee.
Yeah. Yeah, no, Jim Ossling did that actually um, a year ago. And then it was kind of, okay, we need to, he was looking for options about possible rezoning or location. So.
Paying application?
Yeah, yeah, I got that on there, but you said informal and stuff.
It's fine.
So we, it's been on the agenda numerous times and I just want to clarify, yeah, we have a preliminary one, which this will suffice. And it could require a couple of meetings depending on the information we may require that may or may not be there or needs updating. And then, then there's a public hearing and then a final uh, site plan. And some of those can be almost concurrently to the same day.
Okay.
And stuff, but this is a special use case. So that requires the final approval from the township board.
Right.
And so before we send it to them.
We have to approve it first.
Yeah, and we have to have a public hearing first, then come back and then it's okay, this is good enough to go to a final or to the board, or it could be sufficient after the public hearing that it could just go, we could kind of combine things. So you could do two public hearings or you could do one depending.
We obviously, we're, we're in a bit of a hurry.
Yeah, we try to push things along. If you are in a hurry and you have things, um, like what have everything that we're looking for, you know, we can kind of push things pretty quick on our side too.
Great. We'd appreciate that. And thanks very much. Um, all right. So we are here for a telecommunications facility. Um, this is a single pole, um, a monopole is what it's referred to as. Um, is a hundred and ninety-nine feet in height total, including the, uh, including the, uh, um, uh, the lightning rods top. Um, and a hundred and ninety-five feet in actual tower height. Um, the site that we're looking for in this case is deal with a pole in our coverage um, that we know with regard to the first party who's going to go on this site, which is Verizon Wireless. Materials that you received included and information from, um, a plant, an engineer at Verizon, which went through how much they need this particular site and why it's needed. Um, just to give you a sort of a real basic overview of how this works. Each, the reason why it's called a cell phone is because each individual tower creates a cell roughly circular around it. And that's what covers it. And these cells then hook up with each other and they're supposed to bounce up against each other nicely, just like a honeycomb. Now each cell connects up.
This is the first time we've done one of these. So you need the education. So
Excellent. Good.
Continue on.
Yeah. So that's how, that's the reason why they call it a cell phone, because each of them create the cell around which there is adequate coverage. You don't want these zones of coverage, the cell to overlap because the area where they overlap is, it creates destructive interference. So within the area where the overlap occurs, you get virtually no signal, even though there's actually a tower covering it. Um, nor do you want to have a small gap in between the two of them because now that gap is permanent. There's no way to place a tower within a small gap without creating a massive zone of destructive interference. So placing one of these sites, it's really quite, uh, you know, difficult. Um, you have to meet in addition to finding where the site is actually going to go and meet up and have create that honeycomb. On top of that, you also have to, um, deal with a variety of other things. There are twenty-three other agencies besides yourself who have to approve every single tower um, on various levels. Um, some of them you're probably aware of the road commission and the drain commission. Um, but some you're probably not aware of, like for example, that we have to, uh, do a notice to every Native American tribe in America to make sure that this is not a, it doesn't have a, um, particular significance to a Native American tribe.
Really?
Um, so, and we have to do all that as well as the variety of other things to be able to make sure that physically it's going to work the way it is. So it's, it's kind of an art form, trying to figure out where you're going to put some, uh, put a tower. And it doesn't get a lot of leeway when we get the, we get a, uh, we as looking for sites are, we'll get an information from the engineer, in this case from Verizon's engineer uh, saying, this is where I would like to put it. And you literally have a point. That's where I want it. And then it'll give you about a quarter mile in every direction from there and say, that's all I'm giving you. You got to get it inside what we call the search ring. Um, as a result of that, um, this is depending upon how you define it, either just inside the search ring or just outside of it. But either way, if we got the engineer to approve it. So we are just on the sker edges of where it will do the most good and actually do as I just mentioned, fit that honeycomb nicely. Um, the site is designed to be able to allow multiple carriers on it. We do that because as White Rock, that's how we make money. Um, we have multiple carriers on this thing, but even more importantly than that, the Federal Communications Commission requires that, um, all the parties who put up towers have to play nice with each other um, and allow everybody else on it. So if we put Verizon on this, and for example, if Verizon was actually the one who built this tower, Verizon would have to allow everybody else, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, everybody else, they have to allow onto their tower. Equally so, we have to as well, although obviously it's in our interest to do so. Um, so that's how this tower is designed, how it got where it was. Um, the tower itself will be, um, built within a compound, a one hundred by one hundred per compound. You have a site plan in front of you. That shows how that's, that's set. Um, in discussions with the landowner as well as citing, like I said, you know, specifically how we cite the, uh, the locations. We placed it where it is at the back of the property, as far back as we could get it from the road and other, you know, other adjacent sites, other adjacent properties in order to, as your ordinance requires us to do and minimize the visual impact. Um, from our standpoint, in terms of trying to get the overall site to work out, um, we have to, in addition to putting the pole in, there has to be ground equipment. Um, depending upon the company that's putting it on there, they'll either put together a shelter at the base of the tower or more likely, as has become the norm now, uh, what is called a cabinet. It looks very similar to the cabinet you'll see at the base of a telephone pole, which has, you know, the telephone switching equipment. Well, this is similar. This is radio switching equipment that's at the base of the tower and runs basically.
What's the size of it?
Um, what is it? Six foot by about two, two foot?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a cabinet about two feet wide, about six feet tall.
They have like shelter, is that really like twelve by twenty or twelve by twenty-four? This is a lot nicer. They're just cabinets, a lot less space.
As is the case with all electronics, they get smaller over time. Um, and that's what happened in this case as we continued to improve the condition of these.
Where this is said, nobody'd see that other than the property.
Truly, given where we're locating it, he might just.
Is there much residential homes nearby?
Uh, we actually looked at the specifics about where the residential homes are within. The closest one is about seven hundred and fifty feet away.
Okay.
Um, but that's just the one. Most of them that are, that are as close as that about a little bit more than a half a mile away.
The one you're talking about is to the west.
Yeah.
Jason, is that the one we talked about earlier?
Yeah, it's, uh, southwest.
Southwest? That makes sense. Yeah. Cause I was back this way. So, yeah.
I just so happen I own the property just beyond that.
Okay.
And so, uh, I get probably just as much interest as anybody. But I will tell you that I have to use internet calling on my phone because I don't have a cell signal at my house. So.
Let us help you with that.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I was trying to figure out where, you know, like, cause I can actually hear Mr. Ossling's equipment when it's running because they have the landscaping.
Oh, I see. And you're thinking about how much noise?
No, I know it won't make any noise. I just, you know, and I may be able to see the top of that tower, but I don't even know if I'd be able to see that from where I'm at.
You might not be able to, given where you describe where you are and given the, the height of the trees that are around this and from that direction. It's possible that, you know, you're looking from here and the tower goes over here. So anything intervening like a tree might block your vision.
And I guess that's.
But the best you're gonna see is.
The point I was getting at is I don't, I don't see there being a sight, a blight on somebody's view because there's nobody there to see it.
Well, not that up close, but it might be from.
From a land.
Yeah, on the road or the distance. I mean, that stuff we'll talk about.
Yeah.
The, the basic concept is, is that like any of these towers, in fact, all of these towers, they work by line of sight. Each of the towers in effect has to see the other towers. It has to present its, 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 um, its signal. So what happens is that basically you're, you're, you're jumping almost like, uh, leap playing leapfrog. The signal leaps from one tower to the next tower to the next tower. You probably have seen any number of crime shows in which they say, I got a ping off of this tower. That's the pain. That's what they're talking about in that circumstance. That's where, that's what that tower used to get that final signal down to a cell phone itself. Um, then each of these towers creates, like I said, a cell around it. It's about, um, about three miles between towers approximately as a general matter. Um, that's a very rough rule of thumb. The, what you actually put them together depends on the topography around it, any tall structures or trees in between, um, anything that could obscure the line of sight, the topography in terms of depths, you know, valleys and hills. Uh, all make a difference in terms of where you place a site and how high that is actually going to be. This one, and part of the reason why we do it this way, um, we make it, um, just slightly less than two hundred feet tall. So that doesn't have to require, it does not require a light at the top of the tower, um, which would be required if it was two hundred feet or tall.
That was my next question. Was it lit up and?
It is not. Now, the actual tower itself will have some ground lighting and also, you know, on the side of it, there's no strobe light on the top, but no, nothing going off to warn aircraft because it sits too low, uh, to be a hazard to aircraft. And one of those agencies that I mentioned has to approve this is the FAA and its friend, Michigan Tall Structures Agency. Um, so between those two things, we have to get approvals from them as well. Um, FAA, we get a determination called a no, no hazard determination letter that we get from them. Typically, that's an administrative thing. In this case, it definitely will be an administrative thing. There's no, there's no airstrip close enough to make any difference at all. Um, so anyway, there was part of the reason why we put it the way they are. There's no lights at the top of it. Um, it's designed, everything at the base of the tower, the actual closure is, it's actually, the actual area is a hundred by a hundred. We'll start with a slightly smaller area, what sixty-five? Sixty-four by sixty-four for right now. Um, as other parties go into the space and they will, um, and put their equipment up at the top, I mean, other carriers besides Verizon. Um, they will put their equipment, their cabinets, their shelter at the base of the tower.
Okay.
So their equipment on the same.
For the other carriers so they can place their equipment. So hopefully what we're hoping for is that your township will have AT&amp;T. They'll definitely have Verizon, T-Mobile, and you'll have service from all these different carriers.
There are also some internet providers and the like that'll sometimes come to us, even, even the, you know, the local emergency services might come to us to be able to place some, something on the tower. Um, at, at any given point. So, you know, the tower has most, can serve many multiple functions. It's primarily designed, obviously, for telecommunications, wireless phone service. Um, but it has many other potential, you know, applications as part of the process of putting up a tower. Uh, the tower itself, like I said, was located here because this is the primary location for that purpose. Uh, it was placed where it was in order to get it back from, uh, the view shed of, of people as much as possible. Um, it was also placed as close to the trees as we could and also still get our approvals that we need, including an approval from uh, under the Endangered Species Act. Uh, so we often have a difficulty with getting too close to trees because the Indiana bat um, happens to roost in trees and because it might be there, we can't get close enough to it to, to cause a problem for the, for the Indiana bat. Um, I, we've often said, why didn't it go back to Indiana, but it doesn't, you know, they, they never listened to us, the result of which is we have to get ready for it. So bottom line is that we place these things, like I said, and deal with all the agencies and put it the way we have to in order to be able to comply with all these things. And at the same time, provide a cable signal from one site to another site.
So we've been doing this for over twenty-five years. We've done sites all over the state of Michigan and outside of the state of Michigan. And one thing that we try and do when we look for locations, we try and find something that's gonna, you know, be good for the residential district. We don't want anything that's gonna be loud and out there. Originally, we were gonna move it a little bit closer to the road, but we decided that's not good. You know, we don't, we don't want it out there. So that's why we put it where it was, just because we want the residents to be happy.
There are customers after all. So we are trying to make sure that this thing is ultimately, it's something that they will love to see as well. And more helpful than a problem for them. So anyway, that's part of the reason why we do that. We've gone through your ordinance, uh, gone through each of the individual requirements out of this. Um, there is, um, our setback requirements that we won't quite meet in this circumstance because of the nature of this particular, this particular, uh, tower in terms of its height and where it goes around. But as we understood, that's something that can be waived. Um, and we will ask for that in this circumstance, partly because of where we're putting it, um, and where we're trying to keep it away from it. We put it in a different location, it'd be more visible and it would meet the setbacks in that circumstance. But it'd be better for everyone concerned that went back there into that location. Right. And one of the things that should be in your packet is a fall zones letter. It's from Sabre Industries. That's the party who builds the tower. In this case, they build it according to specifications that have been made uh, by Verizon in this circumstance because they're gonna get the first carrier on the tower. Um, those specifications are set up so that the tower is designed, um, so that in a catastrophic event, it doesn't do this. It falls like this. It only crimps over on itself. It hasn't. It's designed to do that. Which is also, you know, something that's being done solely for the purpose of making absolutely certain no Verizon monopole, uh, one that's been built like this circumstance, built it or built to my, to Verizon specification has ever fallen. Um, they've all, they've been hit by things like hurricanes and tornadoes, um, aircraft, trucks. Um, nothing's ever taken one of those down. Um, in that circumstance, um, they actually, the only time that I know of a one coming down was when they actually did it on purpose. They actually blew it up to try to, in order to try to figure out how it would fall to make sure that.
So freezing rain would not do it like we've had in northern Michigan.
Sorry?
The freezing rain?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's one of the things we have to take into consideration. And you'll know if you look at the Sabre, um, the Sabre, uh, letter, they will go through things like, for example, they look at a particular engineering sta- standards that are established for the weather conditions for the specific type of area. So they actually look up this area, they'll look at the weather conditions, they'll design the tower so that it had, it will meet those, meet those requirements without falling and then add twenty-five percent of that. Um, so in other words, it gets, it gets well beyond the safety conditions that is required. In addition, there's about a forty-foot block of cement put into the ground onto which this is bolted. Um, and that's why it doesn't fall down. Um, basically it's, it's in there good and hard. Um, and it's not going anywhere. Um, from that, but anyway, we still have that set up and that's the reason why we got it set up for that purpose. Um, as mentioned, um, you know, Ploddy mentioned how we've been doing this for twenty-five years. Um, Verizon Wireless and the other parties have been doing this for close to fifty years now. Um, gotten better over that time in terms of the towers, you know, for example, I didn't mention any guy wires. They don't do that anymore. They don't need to. They've gotten from an engineering standpoint and gotten better at it. Um, and everything has gotten better in terms of even, even the antennas, um, in terms of what they can do and what they look like. And their, their profiles, the poles themselves have been, to be profiled. One good example is back in the day when very first started to put up poles, they painted them sky blue. Then they found out in Michigan, that's a really bad idea because it isn't, the sky isn't blue enough for that to blend in. So they made it gray. Um, and they also made it out of a, a gal, a non-galvanizing source, galvanized steel rather, um, so that it doesn't rust either, along with. Um, you'll see some of the very, very early poles were made red and white. Um, and that's American Tower Corporation, one of frankly, our competitor. Um, but the, what they did at that time through when they were putting it up, they thought they could avoid the lighting requirements by making it red and white. Instead, instead they made hours that were wildly visually glaring. And it just, it kind of, it kind of, uh, blew the purpose. So even they went back to using a gray tower instead. Anyway, that's basically what we've got here. Um, we've got the other materials that we provided to you as well as the other materials that were required by your ordinance. Um, if there's anything that we can do to provide you with any more information, we would be happy to. Um, and also to provide you anything additional if you ask for.
Your lighting you were talking about, uh, it's, it's down lighting, I presume?
It's on the ground. Um, it's ground lighting. It's, it's cast like this to go down. It's motion activated.
It's only if anybody needs to service it at night.
So I was just asking, yeah, so it's normally not on at night. It's just if needed. Okay.
Uh, you, you won't be able to see it from me. If you're not next to the site, you can't see it.
Okay.
On the ground.
And your setback you talked about, um, I've now reviewed that setback. How much feet would you guys need us to prove?
Okay, so take a look at your site plan. And you'll see the site plan that shows the edges of the property.
There's that plan over there.
Well, we do have an actually bigger, could we go get the bigger one? We do have a bigger one that is brought with us.
Yeah. Jason. I could, the like, if, um, just for a procedural thing about the checklist stuff and going through there, we could do this stuff sequentially.
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah.
Slightly?
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
You want me to answer that question?
Yeah, well, we, we can wait. What, uh, procedurally, we have a checklist which we can provide you that we consolidate essentially. It's everything is in the, in the ordinance and we just put in a format that we can kind of go down and it cross references all the ordinance articles and the, and the items and the intent here is to go over it and then use that as a checklist to identify things that are deficient or missing that we'd like to see. And then, um, and then we, we use that same thing for the preliminary as well as the final site plan review. And on that includes the stuff like setbacks and some of the other questions. So that instead of kind of going, you know, with the questions all over the place, we can go methodically go through this stuff and then I like the stuff and some of us may or may not have gone through the stuff already. So if you want me to start.
You can, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Take, take, take away with that if you want.
Um,
They have a.
That's what I was gonna do. I've, I've, do you have a blank one?
I have a few things written on this.
Yeah, if you have.
I'll go get, just want one more or two more.
Well, if you get three more for them. Please. Now, wait, wait, we go through it. You can annotate the stuff on here, but what, what we do afterwards in our minutes and we'll we'll include, it's a fairly extensive thing, like for things that are deficient or not. So try and, you know, bulletize it. Here's what we need, more information. Here's the article reference and then we'll do that as part of the minutes, but we'll also send you a letter that has those specific things in there.
Like, uh, we actually have quite a, you know.
Is this the one for the site plan or is this for the?
This is just for any project that we have to approve. We actually go through this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's site plan specific.
There's a lot here.
So we kind of approve pretty thorough here.
Yes. So, and, and there's some items that may not be applicable on there. Some things like you, you provided us stuff here and I noted that, that there are some other things that you mentioned you had sent in possibly that we like to see that maybe we're not included in the package that we got.
Okay.
It's tough. But anyway, so away, the again, when we do the minutes, we'll put the stuff that we require that, you know, feed more feedback on. And then we'll do that in, in the minutes. Minutes are usually published, proposed stuff within two weeks of our meeting and then approved at the next meeting, which would be in early May. But then in addition to that, we will send you a letter prior to that when the, uh, once we all approve the pre-approved before the meeting, uh, an actual letter to you that would essentially specify those things by line of, with the reference stuff here. So there's two ways you'd see it and.
Our hope would be to provide those affirmations to you at, at the prior, that next meeting so that we could be in, in a position to have a, possibly have a voting meeting.
Yeah, if you go through this now, this will save us. It'll kind of get us, like you were saying, this will get us kind of going in the process, getting it done for you. So
Absolutely.
It takes a little time, but get this over with. This is the big thing right here.
Yeah. So the, the, the first page of it, um, it's essentially just like the, the raw information. And then we have a spot for each of the preliminary or each of the hearings and who's what and where and the comments we made, the feedback. And then the specific stuff, um, are, are in here with the light item and then the reference with the article of the section of the zoning ordinance where you can go to. Some of them are kind of overlapping and stuff. So we got multiple items and.
Hey, Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes.
A couple of questions I have is, so I think I, I, I appreciate your explanations of how these towers work and they kind of honeycomb up next to each other. But in the absence of this tower that we're considering, where were the most re, or, uh, I guess most near adjacent towers located?
We have a list of the other towers in the area. Closest one I know of is another, is about two point four miles away.
Yeah, and that was something that in, in the ordinance, there's another section here for the.
Yeah. And that was something that in, in the ordinance, there's another section here for the tower stuff that called for a whole bunch of specific guidance for cell towers. And that was one of mine there that we're gonna know, want more detailed stuff and not just to talk, but an actual printout. Here's, here's the coverage maps for you. Here's the things that deficient stuff, deficiencies are. So there's a lot more documentation like that than, it's stuff that you had mentioned that you do, but we're gonna want to see that. And that's what he's alluding to. And it spells it out in, in the ordinance.
But so my question is, so the nearest tower then is two and a half miles away, let's say from this location. And in the absence of that tower, has there been no coverage in a certain area? Or I, I understood you to say that if they overlapped, there would be interference. And if they weren't close enough, there would be gaps in the, in the cell coverage itself. So how has it been running? And what will this make different if this tower is erected here?
Hey, we have something that's referred to as a propagation map. And that will show you in a, in a graphic sense. In a graphical sense, it will show you how it looks. What this does is it shows the existing towers. In this case, Verizon, the existing towers, it'll show where each of the individual cells that are created. And it will show areas that will be in either red or white, showing the areas where the coverage is either poor or nonexistent. So basically what your answer to the question is, there isn't coverage in that area, or at least not adequate coverage. It is possible in any circumstance, just because of the way curvature of the earth, a variety of other things. You can occasionally, even in an area which might be considered a dead zone, be able to pick up a signal every once in a while. But not, you cannot get a consistent signal or a strong signal. The result of which is that you have an area where whose signal area needs to be improved. And that's where you, that's where this area sits right now. In an area where the signal situation is so poor that we have a difficulty with obtaining any kind of coverage inside a building, for example, or in any area where there might be a difficulty in line of sight. So as a result, so anyway, the propagation map that I'm talking about, you'll see it, it'll have a bunch of green and yellow blocks all over it. And it will show, those will be, those will be centered around our individual towers. That'll show you where that, that I talked about, that honeycomb, it'll be the honeycomb showing. And then there will be the area where we're proposing and dead center of that will be what we're proposing. And that area will be mostly red and white. Meaning that the coverage is in, is insufficient. And the red measures and what's happening is that's, that's the result of measurements on the, in the field as well as from, from wireless data that it's obtained, shows the actual signal strength within that area. It's measured in decibels as you might expect because it's sound waves that we're talking about. And that particular area will show what type, what kind of signal strength they're getting in that point. And we know what signal strength is necessary in order to have a consistent, strong signal that can be reached by your conventional cell phone.
And in, in the case of this tower, which I think you said was being built by Verizon, will there be other companies then that will be also attaching their equipment to the tower? And, and when will it be that you'll know who the other companies might be? And, and kind of an adjacent question to that is, my understanding is that certain multiple companies use the same equipment. Like you hear the term, somebody sprint uses Verizon or something like that. So can you maybe expand on that a little bit as to how that will be involved with this particular tower?
Sure. Let me explain that a little bit further. It actually will not be Verizon building the tower. It will be White Rock. That's who actually we represent, not Verizon.
Okay.
White Rock is the tower builder and operator and White Rock will place on it the other, the other carriers. The first carrier who has come to us for, for sighting is Verizon. So Verizon will be the, will have the top, the top position on the pole with its equipment there. Approximately every 10 to 15 feet below that, as you see on there, will be the next operators. We'll go on to the towers after that point. How soon after we put the tower in will we, will we get, will we get inquiries? About five minutes. Basically, it happens almost immediately. The general concept that has been sort of the standard in the, in the, in the, in the industry is that Verizon tends to get there first. And then they're followed immediately after. So basically, as much as it sounds like an advertisement, it's true. Verizon does have the biggest network. In terms of the overall number of towers they have, the number of places where they have antennas, et cetera. So if they have a hole, almost certainly their other competitors also have that same hole. Not always, it's not, it's a rule of thumb to be sure. It's not absolute, but that generally is the case. We expect to get inquiries from other parties as soon as we get approved for the tower, much less before we, even before we build it.
They market the tower to, to all the carriers.
We have our own marketing department. I like, we'll, we'll try to get other people to be able to do that.
So how many do you expect will be totally represented when it's filled out?
We show three on the tower itself. It has the capacity, I think, for four. Has the capacity for four conventional tower. The three gets the ma- the three majors now. And really the only three that are really doing majors, T-Mobile, Verizon and, and AT&amp;T. But there are some others and that's, the other ones are probably the ones you're thinking about. You're talking about other parties like, for example, Cricket Mobile. And I've forgotten some of the other smaller ones. Other names, I forgot the other ones. Oh yeah, right, right. There you go. There's another one, Boost. You know, other ones like that. Those are smaller companies who don't actually run their own equipment. What they do is they pay the other majors like Verizon, et cetera, to be able to take, to be able to piggyback, if you will, on their equipment. And use their equipment to be able to provide their, their, their signals. The vast majority of these smaller companies, despite the fact you listen to them and they sound like they're some kind of independent alternative, they're not. Almost all of them are owned by one of the three majors. Cricket, for example, is owned by Verizon. And the result of which is, is that these individual companies, the smaller companies, they provide an alternative service. And they would use Verizon, so piggyback on Verizon's network. It's because they're actually Verizon. It's just Cricket is a more stripped down version, you know, it, it doesn't, it provides a little, it provides only cell service. It doesn't provide you know, the, the, the internet services. It doesn't provide the wireless. It might provide limited texting, but it's more limited in that respect. So those other companies you were mentioning. That's where they are. That, that's what they're doing. They're piggybacking on the existing signals created by the majors. They don't actually themselves install any new antennas up there. They simply use the existing antennas by the other majors.
Alright, so there may be three antennas, but there may be 14 different carriers that people may use in the area that will be enhanced by the fact that those three carriers antennas are on the tower.
That is absolutely correct. Basically, you know, I mentioned earlier that the, there's something called the telecommunications act. It's the thing that created the FCC. And it also creates the process by which we are, we with Verizon and all the other parties who, you know, provide wireless service, get their permits or licenses to broadcast over that, a particular frequency. And that license requires them to provide service universally. They have, they have an obligation in order to be able to keep the license to provide service to as many process areas as they can possibly get under within the area that the license covers. And that's true of all the parties. So as part of that process, the FCC and that telecommunications act encourages competition between the individual carriers. So one of the things it said, as I mentioned earlier, to play nice in each other's backyards. Well, that basically what it says is that if you've got a tower, you are required by federal law to allow all the other carriers to go on it, even if they're your competitor, you still have to allow them to go on your part, on your tower. So that resulted in a lot of side agreements with their various, between the various companies to be able to create fee structure from deal with. But most of them have done what Verizon is doing in this case. They've engaged a White Rock or an AT, or an ATC, or somebody else who actually builds towers for a living. And they, those parties will put up the tower for them and they'll put their equipment on it.
So basically, the reason for my questions were, there's a lot of people who in, in our area, in our township, may have difficulty like Jim described where he only lives, you know, less than a mile maybe from this tower site, but he's had trouble with coverage before. So the likelihood is, is then that a person like that in that situation who's had difficulty before would now be better served in general by having a tower in this position?
Absolutely. And eventually they'll have the ability to be able to choose among the various carriers. Like I said, Verizon's coming in there first, but most likely we'll see the other carriers on it as well. So there will be options as far as what you're going to be able to do. Again, the federal telecommunications act is designed in order to be able to create that competition, provide that kind of choice to the consumer.
Alright, thank you.
When I know the area well, I literally sometimes stop my car when I'm on a conversation and park so I don't drive through that area. I know I'm gonna lose the person I'm talking to.
Okay. Just to start in that, they actually, page one of three of the actual checklist portion. Up top, I put the, the documents on there. The public notice, special land use, that, that'll be TBD when we have the hearing. The application form, we got that, you put that in. The project narrative, there was a project narrative portion on the front of the site plan. But what we also want to see is actually like an executive summary that's a standalone or a document that has more information than what you provided there. You can also put, put that on the site plan, but it's kind of like a, like an upfront thing. This is okay, here's, and there's more details we're going to. Yeah, so it'll be, there are certain things on here like extra permits or licenses, like you mentioned some already that are required that we say, okay, please list those on there and some other things that, you know, may, we may have it listed. We'll, we'll get to those when we go through there. But anyway, so that's the next, looking for there is, is an additional like executive summary type of word document. Site plan drawing, we, we've got the stuff here. I think there's a few things that may be missing on there. Has everybody had a chance to go through it? Well, you've, I know you've been gone. Okay. The vicinity sketch. You, you had one listed on here. There's a little more details. We'll hit up in a minute here. Elevation drawings of the buildings. I saw you had that of the tower on there. The floor plans to be occupied there. I think that sends you a non-applicable type of thing. You, you've got the footprint of the, of your boxes, cabinets and then potential areas designated for the other cabinets, I saw. Again, on, this can go in the narrative, a statement that identifies all the other federal, state or local permits that's required and stuff. So that's something that needs to be included on there. Photographs, that's an optional thing. You've got it overlay there. Environmental impact mitigation report, if it's required. You, you alluded to some environmental wickets you had to go through. So if those are required, whatever, you'd list them out. And I'm not sure what, what they are here. This, this being a tower and not a building with some other stuff, there probably some things aren't applicable. There are some wetland stuff around there and, and some wooded stuff. Traffic impact mitigation. That's something I don't think we, we need that. That's, you're back off the area. You gotta dry well your. Probably property line survey, you've got that in here, I saw. And then a anticipated project completion schedule. And that, what we're looking for is just, again, that can be included in, in the narrative, you know, summary, just a generic timeline when the project says go to when you expect to be completions and a couple of major milestones that you may have in there. And if it's this right here, we have an opportunity, there's possibilities of a phasing plan. Things are done in a couple of phases. I think right here, my thinking is this is just all a phase one. There's no multiple phases. With the exception that you may have other people that would put additional antennas on there. And I don't know how that would be handled. That, I don't, I don't see that as an additional phasing plan we, we even need. And you don't know.
That's just something that happens after that.
Yeah.
It's not even a permit thing.
It's a lot of the phase, like we had some mini storage units put in and some of them, they built a whole bunch. There was, we approved a lot for a certain size or a certain capability and they're gonna wait how the business goes. So there'd be a multiple facing with unknown thing then or there. So that's not applicable there. Okay. So going over the minimum, I just, I just read through just for there on this, on there, the first one is a site plan, the minimum requirement, site plan should be provided on a professional quality drawing scale, not less than one to, one inch to 100 feet and clearly represented with the required information. I, I see, I think you satisfied this right here, but all information depicted is professional engineer, land survey and landscape architect licensed in Michigan, bears a sealed signatures of the licensed individuals that shall present all the necessary information in a clear and comprehen- comprehensible fashion and be of such clarity and detail that permit determination of its conformance to the ordinance and the satisfactory construction of the project if approved to ensure the public safety, health and welfare. So I say, yeah. 2B, name and address, a phone number in each application. You've got that. 2C, name, address, phone number, prepared for each of the firm drawings. You've got that. C, the vicinity sketch showing the location of the site in relation to the surrounding road system for a minimum distance of one quarter mile in all directions, vicinity sketch or other components of the site plan material shall also be identified, the existing zone classifications and current use of all properties within 300 feet in every direction of the proposed use, including land uses on the opposite side of any road and the location of all structures and buildings within 100 feet of the property. My thinking is the building you've got, the existing one is the only one I think meets a hundred foot area.
I thought when we talked about this before, there was some question about the setbacks as being different from what the actual ordinance required. And I, I apologize by not being able to quote exactly what that was, but I thought it had something to do with the, the distance from the location of the tower and other properties. Is that part of that particular incident, Mike?
No, that's part 2H. Couple, couple. Yeah.
Alright.
Yep. Anyways, for the, the one thing I felt was missing from the vicinity thing was you had the little inset maps there and you've got the other means, but just kind of one that actually has, okay, here's the zoning classifications of the surrounding properties within that distance there. And that would be like the way, this, this property is classified as a local C1 district. Yeah, that way, I mean, that's, it, it's kind of a trivial thing, but it's it's just like a diagram. So you could look at it really easy. Say, okay, this is C1, this is our, our residential one. We have several different classification codes which is in there. Okay. 2E, the property line survey correlated with illegal description showing property line dimensions and bearings lot area, graphic scale and north area. Got that. 2F, ID existing uses, building structures, roads, materials. Easements and all their existing site improvements as a designation as to wish or to be retained, removed and otherwise altered. And in the delineation of other, any driveways or any other curves within 100 feet of the property, done that. 2G, ID existing natural features within 300 feet of the site, including woodlands, wetlands, drainage, courses, water bodies, 100 foot, 100 year flood plan areas. Topography had no greater than two foot contour intervals and soil and by type and drainage features according to the county survey, soil survey. Or well buried boring logs, size and type and location of the, all the trees, 10, 10 inches or greater in diameter, not otherwise, and a part of a wooded area, measure five feet above the ground surface. And that, these I think on the ZD zero page, you had a bunch of trees and stuff in there. I assume that's what those, those, that wasn't a random thing that they.
No, no, that's, that's the actual trees. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any issues?
I assume the drain commission, you said they have to prove is that part of what they're gonna be looking at, some of these items?
Certain number of these things are clearly handled by other parties. For example, the environmental survey thing, we have to do a NEPA search, so. a NEPA search, which requires us to go through the Michigan, uh, no, it depends on which one it's called at a given time, but either it's Department of Environmental Quality or the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, but both cases, we have to do this pursuant to a NEPA, uh, National Environmental Protection.
Yeah, if, whatever those are, because we don't know all those things there, like in the narrative summary, just put, list them, if you would.
Yeah, we can list the kinds of things like.
Yeah, and, and they need, and some of them need to be done, they don't necessarily need to be done for the approval of the plan, they need to be done prior to getting the permit.
And we know that.
And stuff, yeah, so.
Obviously, we can't get our permits. We can't get all those permits.
Right, yeah, so that, that's kind of stuff. And there are some areas like that, so we'll put, you know, be TBD or you're worried, but this list of stuff, so that way we also have a listing, we know what to go to. Okay, two H, ID the required front side yard, rear setbacks for the principal building in the district, and I believe you did do that. So that one of the areas. Yeah, that was in ZD one. Now, I see you mentioned you need, there was a variance, the setback that wasn't met, can you point that out in the map, which one?
It's the one that says the height of the tower. According to the ordinance. One hundred feet or 100% of the tower's height, whichever is greater. It's okay, that would be the, that did the tower height, 195. Um, so you'll see that's from the property line, which is actually, it's, that's actually a contiguous line. It's adjacent to the same property owner's property. Um, so it's actually part of the same property. And that's what you see, it shows a hundred and seven foot and six and a half, um, setback.
Yeah, okay, so that one's supposed to be deficient then by a certain amount of feet? Okay, now, on that.
They were told we could, you know, ask for a waiver, um, at this point.
I thought that our discussion was such that we determined that there was a waiver that could be, um, utilized in this instance and that we all felt as a group that that was okay. But I just wanted to point that out as you were going through these things, because we have had that discussion previously and it was decided that it would be all right.
You're saying for this specific one or?
Yeah, for this specific instance, we had this, uh, same question come up about the, the height of the tower or a hundred feet. And, uh, it was over a hundred feet to the height of the tower and to the boundary, I believe it was to the, um, to the west. And our, our discussion previously was such that we thought that it would be appropriate to allow the waiver for that instance.
Okay, that was over a year ago and I don't recall that. But I know there's two ways to get to, it's whether or not the board can do the waiver, which is what Greg is suggesting, that we could just waive it. Or the process, what we've done with other people, other things is to do the standard variance request where they go through the ZBA. The zoning board of appeals for the township and, and get that waiver here.
That's kind of why we went through the things about the fall zone and curbs over in itself, et cetera. That was the areas I'm talking about.
Um, what, what do you think about this, Tom?
Well, we got a little problem, I think. You need to go to, um, section 7.28, which deals with communication towers.
Right, there was a lot of things in there on that.
And it's number D. Under class two communication towers, item D. There's a standard there, there's a set of tables. That basically, in this case, if I'm reading it right, the, the separation distance from that rear lot line would be 200 feet. Or the height of the tower, whichever is greater. So let's just use 200 feet.
Thanks.
The site plan shows a hundred feet. But in that narrative, that we can, um, we can reduce that standard up to 25%. So 25% would be 50 feet. So we would still be requiring 150 feet. And we've got a hundred. So if I'm doing this right, the tower might need to move back 50 feet. You guys look that up.
Or get it there.
Agree with my narrative, right?
Does it matter to you guys if we move, if we had you move it or not?
This is where the landowner would like it to be. We're trying to preserve use of his property. The more we, the more we go inland inbound, there are two things happening when we go inbound from that direction. Um, one is that we get closer to residential structures. That was, the whole point was to try to get away from them. This will push them closer if you do that. The other, the other problem with it is that, um, it, it creates more area, which is unusable by the landowner. Um, for virtual, for other purposes, uh, by virtue of doing it.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the reason why we did it in that circumstance. We could talk to the landowner about doing it, but to be candid, it would make more sense to keep it where it is and get a variance.
Right, the, my, my suggestion for right this minute, we tabled this, that discussion for our determination, which of course we want to do. I, I think they can make arguments that we probably, especially with this thing right here, with the, the type of, and what the other, um, subtleties with the tower stuff is better to go through the formal process of going through the ZBA and stuff there. But for right this minute, I'd like to just move on to the next thing and we can maybe at the end of the meeting. Tom, you good with that?
Sure.
Okay, so that was two H. Okay, uh, project narrative, uh, that addresses the filing, intended use of the property in each building, the, um, acreage devoted to each use to multiple uses are proposed. Total number of dwelling units and density of each housing in the project, total usable floor area of the different, uh, facilities, the amount of recreational open space, the recreation facilities provided. Computation is the number of parking spaces, there's no parking spaces required here and other related information. And the other information would be like the org, the stuff we talked about before, and I'll, I'll spell that stuff out.
Yeah, this is an unoccupied, it's not even a building, it's just, it's a cabin.
So so I've marked that as basically deficient, just there are a couple more, more stuff on there. Proposed to two J.
Can I stop you there for a minute? I'm not sure what's deficient in that circumstance. We don't, we don't have an occupied building, so we can't give you.
No, no, that, that was a listing of some general things and some of those don't necessarily apply to here. But, but there are other things in the narrative that we want to put there. In some of these cases, if there's no set thing for the narrative says, okay, X, Y, Z. You know, there's things that allude to things that go in there. So it's kind of like a catchall stuff. These were some of the things that, and these don't necessarily all apply to your case, but the narrative would include in addition, what I, I addressed before, additional, um, you know, permits and that kind of stuff. We'll, we'll spell it out in, uh, in the letter. Okay, two J, proposed public roadways, private easements and deed restrictions. You, you showed where the, um, the road was. I don't know about any deed restrictions.
There are none that we know of that would be affecting this.
Okay, um, two K, proposed rows, driveways and alleys, including whiffs, cross sections, profiles, acceleration, deceleration, turn lanes, driveways, parking spaces, parking aisles and with indication total number of spaces, that's all not applicable. Uh, but the direction of travel inside curves, radius, driveway, um, sidewalks, non-motoredized, uh, traffic. Travel ways, proposed traffic control measures, including signs shall be indicated that a lot of, I think you've met that. Unless there's any other issues, uh, two L, source and location of all public and private utilities, including potable water, sewage disposed, electrical communication lines, the necessary easements that exist are proposed to be established for the installation, repair and maintenance of such utilities. And I don't think any of that applies, and that would be a, a case where in the narrative you just put there are none.
Well, except electrical, there is proposed.
Yeah, right, the electrical stuff in there, but the, I, I assume there's not gonna be any water stuff.
No, no.
On, on there.
Nothing like that.
Yeah. Two M, proposed accessory buildings and structures, including trash receptacles and enclosure signs and lighting. There we got, if there's not gonna be, I assume there's not gonna be any trash receptacles there, and you would just state that in the narrative. The lighting, the same thing you just mentioned, we'll make mention that there was no lighter, there will be some lighting and there's a special lighting section here that addresses like the down lighting, but you've talked about that and just need to address it.
It actually is on the site plan too.
Yeah, I think. Um, I know the, the big concern of all that was like the beacons on top of the towers and that if and you said that's, you, you've, you're not doing that. The graphic illustration, location extended which the natural features on the site shall be disturbed or otherwise cleared, including those in another paragraph. Here, I, I drove by the place. Just prior to the meeting here, and I went through, I think, said curb road they got on there. So there was kind of like a little berm of stuff. I, my assumption is that there's a wooded area here that that's gonna be in that wooded area portion, so.
Kind of tucking it in there.
Yeah, clearing it out, okay. And on the next page, two O, a landscaping screening plan in compliance with the requirements of article 11.
Your wireless service doesn't require any specific landscaping requirements with regard to a tower like this. As mentioned, we're actually putting in the existing, you know, the existing area has already existing vegetation for obscuring it. So that's all, that's what we're proposing basically, not additional, no additional landscaping.
Right, okay, and that would be a point I would just stop pointing out there, just make that statement, no additional stuff. There are, there are some in, in section, seven 28 that Tom was alluding to. There are some more detailed things about stuff and it talked about some of the fencing surrounding the, the area and yeah, I talked in page, the fencing and lighting.
It's in section four.
Yeah, and so there's minimum a six foot high fence with anti-climbing measures. And I think you've put
Both the tower and the actual fence have anti-climbing measures on it.
Yeah, okay.
The tower has essentially, you remove about a 25 foot section at the base of the tower where you would have normally step ladders to allow you to walk up the, that's removed. And when somebody comes there to maintain the site and maintain the tower, they bring with them a 25 foot ladder that they attach to it. That's how they get back and forth.
Okay.
The fence itself, it's just got barbed wire on it, so it prevented it being, being, uh, you know.
Right, did you, was there a spot on here that described the fence? I thought there was and I.
There was, let me find it. This is ZD one.
Oh, yeah, okay, see.
And then ZD two goes through the actual events, the, the actual tower itself and what it's on it. And then, and the narrative on the site plan, it's another description, I think.
Right, okay. Right, I would say that's met then. A two P. Uh, grading storm. Storm drainage, storm water management plan, including also erosion and sedimentation control measures and spot elevations to adequately portray the drainage patterns and final elevations of the grade. Such plan shall include location drainage easements, exterior uh, drains, dry wells, catch basins, retention uh, areas, sumps and other facilities, uh, designed to collect water or transport. A lot of the point of storage of all drains and pipes shall be specified in the site plan as well as invert and related elevations, pipe lengths and slopes to construct the same. Such plan shall document the, uh, clearing of the vegetation and the extent of the clearing, cuts, fills and other grading and finished floor elevations while the other buildings.
Where you get to that one, that one in particular, um, as I mentioned, we have to go to the drain commissioner. And one of the things we have to do is during construction, provide a sedimentation or an erosion control. That goes along with it. So we'd actually ask that that particular requirement not be required from your end group until we have gotten, or make, you can make the delivery of the building permit, um, ultimately conditioned upon it. But that you've gotten approval from the drain commissioner, because we can't do that until we've done the soils report, sort of a catch 22, you can't do one without the other. And we don't go to doing drain, you know, go to the expense of soils reports and the like until we've got zoning approval. Um, so you've got to, you've got to do some of this stuff, can't be done simultaneously, has to be done.
Right, yeah, we understand that. And that was the thing, like with the, if this approved in a case like that, we'd say it's approved with conditions. And then the condition would be, so that he has it, so that when Jason's the one that order, uh, distributes, issues the permit. That's the thing he's checking off. Yeah, yeah, so that stuff we make. But so you, you got a drain commissions report and soils report, which I know, and you, and because your stuff, you may have some more requirements to what we normally see from that, that may be related to this stuff. Okay. All right, um, two Q. Location specification of any existing or proposed, uh, bubbleable ground storage facilities for any toxic hazardous substances, as well as any containment structures or clear zones required by government authorities, a complete inventory of toxic hazardous substances to be stored or used in the site, including the quantity of substance names, characteristics, proximity and materials of the water equity. Bottom line, is there gonna be any, I assume there's not gonna be any toxic materials stored here for.
No, there will be a, there'll be a fuel tank that generate, that's for the generator.
Okay.
Fuel generator that has diesel in it. Diesel, right, in this case?
Only run if you lose power, correct?
Correct, yeah, it does. It's run for about 10 minutes a month in order to make sure it's working, just to test it, but that's about it. Yeah, and that's solely for the purpose of being able to do it. Um, you might remember quite a few years ago now, probably 2001. Remember we had the Eastern Seaboard just kind of winked out.
Yeah, it was 2003.
Because a squirrel got into a container in Ohio. Um, anyway, so the bottom line was that when that happened, um, we had all these towers that worked for a short period of time and then went down. Um, they didn't, they weren't, they're in the fall, but they didn't work. They didn't have electrical power in terms of, you know, the backup. Some of them had it and some of them didn't. Horizon in particular made a decision to include, um, uh, backup generators for every single one of its sites. Um, some of them depending upon, they're powered by various things, depending upon what it is. Some of them are solar powered. Um, some of them are created where they, where the electric, where the electric power that comes to feed the, uh, uh, the antennas will actually uh, power fuel cells on the site and do that as well. Typically don't do that as much in rural settings simply because the fuel cells are no, are not as necessary in this circumstance. You don't lose the power as often as you do in the urban setting. Um, but anyway, bottom line was that we ended up getting, we've got a diesel, diesel tank there that's gonna power the generator. Typically they don't get it for, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 38 hours.
Is that generator in the house? Sorry, so is that generator gonna be like?
It's on site. You can see a picture of it in there.
And it, it being enclosed facility?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's in the 64 by, is that the little, um, so it's, it's, it's above ground?
Uh, you're talking about the tank.
The tank.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
You'll see it, it looks.
Is that that oblong thing?
That's the oblong, yeah, it looks like a pill. Yeah, that's.
Right, yep. Okay. Yeah, it's inside of it. Thank you.
Hey, Mike?
Yes.
I got a, I got a little list here. I'll just give you what I wrote down and, uh, you've covered 99% of it. Talking about the fuel tank, label that on the print, you know, identified as a propane tank.
It is on the ta, on the tank.
Yeah, not on mine.
It's not labeled?
No.
No.
I'll, I'll note it.
I don't, they normally do that. Oh, very soon. They just put those. That's.
Yeah, you've covered the.
Somebody made a mistake. It's almost always something, but I mean, why put a big giant tank there and then not label it? So anyway. We'll get a label, we'll get a label.
I don't know if you talked about the road commission, you need to get the permit for your driveway.
We do, yes.
Your road cut. And basically just like to see you. Maintain as much of the natural vegetation as possible and for screening and basically all directions. And maybe a bunch of not having the landscape later.
Absolutely. That's exactly why we're doing it in the first place. It's both our benefit and obviously for visual purposes, it's also for your benefit.
Basically, that's all I got. You covered everything else pretty well, Mike.
Okay, I'm still continuing here. Um, elevation, elevation drawings in two R, the buildings, you've got that. Uh, two S, a statement identifying all federal local permits, we already talked about that, if you just include those on there. Two T, anticipated project completion schedule, I mentioned that already, just that can be provided in the narrative, just, it's just from the time go with a couple of key milestones. Two U, other such information is necessary to enable the reviewing about a term where the site plan is, um. Conforms to the previous provisions of the ordinance including, but not necessarily limited. Uh, could be aerial photographs and primary round traffic impact studies. One, one of the things there. Uh, I'd like to see, I don't know if the board agrees, it's just what the, um. Intended radio frequency, frequencies and things you're going to be radiating at. And in the power stuff, so I assume you have, I mean, there's federal controls and listings and all that, kind of like to see what, what exactly you're going to be putting out from the power from that. That was, uh, to you, that was kind of a generic. I, I have several questions and stuff at the end of all these things that. Kind of catchalls, I didn't know where they fit in. But some of that stuff is talked about too in that section, uh, seven twenty eight, about the addition requirements for the cell towers, about stuff you. Okay, going on, general standards of a site plan and section three of this checklist, three A. All elements of plan should be harmoniously and, um. Efficiently organized relation to size, character of lot and the manner of building support facilities. And are related, how they relate to one another physically, visibly, visibly. And the character proposal is viewed but from nearby properties and roads in relation to the intended district which property is located. One of the things there is, is a possibility and I don't know what the view is going to be from the road, if you can see the thing at all from a distance. And if you can, um. Is there camouflage stuff that you guys use? I seen some of the towers, they put kind of like fake stuff on there for the, so you aren't seeing.
We weren't planning to do that in this circumstance here, we're referring to is called a stealth tower. One of the times that we did, we've done that is when it's in typically in an area where it's immediately adjacent to. Um, other residential uses and the like, we've done it in that circumstance. This, as you've noted already, is fairly far distant from it. It's going to be in the middle of a bunch of existing very tall trees. Um, anytime you put the camouflage that you're talking about on it, it reduces the amount of, uh, carriers you can put on the tower. Because what happens is that the individual stuff that constitutes branches, whatever you put in the base branches, they take up space that otherwise would have been used by antennas. So then you got to keep pushing things further down. In addition, you'd have to put that little conical piece at the top of it. So now it's not longer, no longer 195 foot tower, now it's 175 foot tower. And it doesn't cover as much area as it used to. Um, that goes along with it unless we want to make it more than 200 feet. And now you've got a blinking light at the top of your, uh, the top of your, uh, your fake tree. Um, as a general matter, um, if there isn't a real good reason to, to camouflage it. Especially in a circumstance here where it would be almost invisible to almost everybody. Um, in case with regard to it, um, we don't do that. Um, because it causes so many difficulties for the actual, uh, delivery of, the delivery of the wireless service. You get lower, you get lower antennas, you get fewer carriers because they can't locate it on high and can't get on it high enough to have, have any use.
Make their services even that well because the stuff in, it's really the same as for me.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's also, yeah, because part of the reason, you remember I talked about there's intervening things. In an urban area, it's buildings. In a rural area, it's trees. And in this particular case, uh, if you've got to get lower in order to accommodate the, you know, the stealth branches and the like. Now you're starting, your very first antennas are starting at 175. Then you've got branches there, you remember saying it was every 10 to 15 feet. Well, now you're every 20 to 25 feet. You're going to have to push them down. So your next tower, your next, your next person who's in the tower is probably at about 150. Um, the next one's down at about 125. By the time you're down to 125, especially in a rural area like this, it's virtually useless. It's not, it's not tall enough anymore to be able to do anything. So now you got, you, now you said, you know, we were talking about before about having sufficient number of carriers. To have competition on a lot of people, those are options. Um, you put, you camouflage this tower and you're going to get two at most, um, carriers on that. Um, because the other one won't want to go on it because it's too low for them to be able to be functional. So, like I said, uh, there are reasons to do a camouflage tower, do a stealth tower. Um, this probably is not one of those circumstances where it makes much sense to do that. Advantages are way outweighed by the disadvantages. And.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I just, uh, before I, I, I understand all that, that stuff. And I know those are all things that concerns and stuff. I, I don't know what the, the view's going to be. From the road where you potentially could see it. If you're right up close, you're not going to see it through the trees, but there are things there. And then even if you are, is that any, you know, is that any different than, than a regular? Yeah, telephone pole or does that make much difference to the landscape or something that, um, I don't know. I, I don't think it does ultimately, but.
I think, I think it'd be fine the way it is.
You know, I'm, I'm new at this, so. Lead ignorance, but there's going to be a public hearing, right?
Yes. Well, there'll be a lot of concerns with.
Well, that, well, I guess you'll find out if there's enough people.
Well, there you go.
Really concerned about that, right?
Yes, but in, in, in preparation for some of that stuff, and I know you can do it with the computer models and stuff like that. With the general tree line where it's going up, if there's a ring, a word be visible from. You know, from the roads, not necessarily from a path that's walking in there, but the primary. Things where, and that's something just to have on hand. If we do a public hearing and questions come up and arise from that.
I'll say, um. In general, the public's pretty used to cell towers. I mean, you're seeing them everywhere along buildings, inside parking lots, um.
I, if it helps.
Not making an excuse for it, but yet, um. You know, we'll, we should deal with that like Jim said at the public hearing and so forth. I don't think it's worth debating it right now.
Okay, if it helps any, um, before I was like a consultant on zoning matters, um, for telecommunications companies. Um, so I drove a particular way to get to work. I, I worked at that time on the city of Birmingham. And I drive about a half an hour, about 20 miles or so, um, to do that. I apparently passed 23 towers when I did that, literally 23 towers on route to getting to that point. Um, I never noticed them until I became, started working for them. When I started working for them, then I noticed them because I was looking for them now. They've really become ubiquitous. I think the, the comment that was being made is, is accurate. There, it is a situation where. Um, in terms of looking at them, they're just like telephones. I mean, back in the day, back, way back, when telephones were just starting to go in. There was very surprisingly, very similar conversations were being had about all these poles that are going up, they're going to mar my view. Kind of thing. And then everyone said, you know, these telephones are kind of cool. I want to have a telephone. It's really useful to have a telephone. And then they, then the, the pole became okay in terms of doing it. This is very similar circumstance.
And this was not anybody's sight, like they're not anybody's view, like you, you could drive around the road, you're not going to be. Seeing a tower like in front of you. I mean, you'd have to look.
You're right. That's the point I was going to make. There's actually. No roads that I can think of that are going directly towards that tower.
There's none.
It's, the tower would be off to your right or left as you're going down the hundred. My guess is that your view, if you catch a glimpse of that tower, be on your way down Pioneer Hill. Or maybe from a distance out here as you're going towards Pioneer Hill, but you'd go, you'd be driving off the road to be able to. Spot that thing, you wouldn't.
Yeah, I can, you're on 50, 55 miles an hour driving by without.
Hey, it's.
Five, five, five feet away from, from the road, almost 500 feet away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
And, and the, and we, we did, we are doing a monopole here, which is the best tower to have. It's just a pole with the panel antennas on top, nothing major.
Sometimes referred to as a limited profile design because.
How wide is it up, up, up top?
How wide is it at that point? At the base, it's about six feet in diameter. Actually, no, I'm wrong. It's eight feet.
It's wider.
And it telescopes up. In fact, that's how it's put up. It's actually put up like a telescope, you know, like pulling a telescope out like.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's very similar situation. By the time you get up to the top, it's, you know, a smaller conical sized shape by the time you get up.
It's not like some of the other, the thousand foot towers you see, they're like the.
Oh, yeah.
The tripod that's, well.
Yeah, you, you, in fact, I was, I was looking at a couple of them. I always do this on the way, the hearing. I was actually looking out there and seeing the other towers are out there. And some of the towers, the ancient towers that we used to do way back in the day, um, they've got, you know, 50. Wires hanging off the sides of this thing to hold it up. Um, design that's long gone, never, it's never done anymore.
How many people notice the towers on top of Pioneer Hill, like trying to drive up? There's towers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, some.
Okay, I'd say that's met then.
Thank you.
Um, three B, the site plan should be a character that supports the purpose of the district with the development to be located and is described in the purpose tables of Article Three. I think there's. And Greg has alluded to it in the other, there's like, I mean, there's a need for. Some of the coverage stuff there, but what I don't know. Is what's the coverage of the other places? And I know that some things just because they're out there, I'm making, um. Some. Bringing up some stuff just for the sake of.
What you're discussing is a propagation map. We'll, we'll provide that.
Yeah, and, and that's when you see that stuff is, is there's also, you know, is there other means these things can be satisfied? You know, there's the big efforts with the broadband stuff and the broadband is wifi and there's also the landline and, and what's in there. And then there's multiple. Things going on and, and stuff there. So I don't know in the overall scheme how that relates to it, but. But. From a need standpoint, the usage, I think it does support. The people can invited added service in there. For that, but.
We didn't have a reason to be here, uh, it wouldn't be here.
Then, uh. Three C, the site plan should not impede the normal norly development improvement or enjoyment. Of the surrounding property uses permitted in the district, including matters pertaining to visual impacts. From the lighting signage, outdoor storage, genossary parking area, we talked about that and I think they meet. All that, that with the. Uh, three D, the site plan should preserve the environmental character of the site as far as practical. By minimizing removal disturbances to the onsite natural resources. Uh, features such as the trees, woodland, soils, topography, water courses and wetlands. And I think you alluded to that. They meet that. Uh, three E, the site plan should provide for the removal of stormwater so as to minimize the onsite flood conditions and. Assure the well-being of users of the property. Uh, while not adversely affecting the adjacent properties, public and natural drainage systems due to flooding, erosion, sedimentation and other negative impacts. Stormwater management plan should rely on existing drainage patterns where the practical minimized topographical, topographic alter. Alterations and incorporate the necessary means, measures to discourage soil erosion and sedimentation. And discharge of impurities into the groundwater, nearby water, uh, courses, I think. You're going to meet that, but that, the final thing would be in the. And the study environmental impact studies, I think.
And it's similar situation.
You said there's going to be a 40 foot slide. Is there like, is that 40 feet vertically into the ground? Such, yeah, okay. It wasn't just 40 feet square around here. So that's a significant dig. And, and block. Um, three F, the site plan should provide vehicular and non-motorized circulation and parking amenities ensures visually clear, safe. Convenient, efficient travel on the site and egress and ingress and egress points, including minimizing the congestion and conflicting turning. Patterns minimizes negative impacts upon the, uh, abutting properties and roads. Including coordination with the existing and planned public circulation system improvements there too, and avoidance of unnecessary curb cuts. And it's also to be arranged as permitted emergency access by the same practical means to all sides. Now here. Essentially going to have two accesses. You got the, the road's going to be in there like 30 feet, I think, wide. So that's big enough for the. Emergency vehicles, fire trucks. And then on the other side, you don't have it listed here, but. There'll be access, I think, from, if they had to, from the landscaping from Jim Oslings.
Oh, I search your thing, yes.
You have property there, so, yeah.
Go through, if they needed to, they could do it that way.
Yeah, there's two avenues of approach. There's one listed here, the one you're going to make a formal one.
That's the one we're going to prove, but yeah, it could be potentially.
Yeah, so. Point there, I think it meets that. Uh, three G. The site plan should provide for the appropriate location of all necessary and proposed utilities, underground facilities to be provided. To the great extent feasible and you've got that done, uh, delineated on the site plan. That's met. Uh, phasing, there's not going to be phasing, I think you said there, none. So three H is met. As three I, site plans conform to all applicable township planning documents, including the goals and objectives of the master plan and other applicable ordinances, state and federal statutes. Any comments? Stuff on there. I, I do have concern, but it's such, uh, with the health effects of the surrounding stuff just from cell towers in general. And, but I'm also aware that there's state or there's federal law and stuff that prohibits you from. For, 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 I mean, denying it, which actually that's a whole nother issue and stuff, but that's where I, I still would like to see what the EMF thinks.
If it could help you a little bit in terms of dealing with this. What's being produced by this, by this tower is radio waves. It's the exact same stuff that comes out of your radio, it comes out of your car, comes out of your wireless, your wireless router for your computer. Et cetera, except that it's thousands of feet farther away from you than all those things are.
But.
You actually get more, you get more radio signal strength, higher strength signal. From the phone you have in your hand and you have from the tower that's above there, even though the towers, it's broadcasting at a particularly high frequency.
That, that's why, yeah, I'm familiar with a lot of that stuff. I've got extensive background.
Even the microwave, it's like when I turn my microwave on, I walk away.
Yeah, there, that's why I'm just.
This doesn't produce microwaves, but.
No, and that's why I wanted the frequency stuff. Um, so I want to have them back pocket so you can explain to the people, here's what's out there, but I also know there's concerns. And I've been, um. Anyways, I'm fully aware of all that stuff. There are dangers, a lot of things in this, in the research and literature and stuff that's. It's not accounted for, but we can't, we can't afford, but I still want to have some of that stuff documented so I know what. What, what, what there is, so. So. That, that three I or, yeah, three I, eight I is actually met. I believe then based upon that, but. Um, the other thing, specific. Uh, standards, so we put the other articles that are applicable, um. For some of the things like the off-street parking, that's not applicable there in Article 10 or D C. Landscaping and screening, you're going to address that. And essentially there's, I think it's self-screened. Now before the signs, are there going to be signs like on the fence around there, just like warning signs or?
There are certain signs that were required by federal law to place there, they're like this. And there's, there's a couple of placards there, they just simply talk about it. They talk about an unauthorized entry.
Right.
Unauthorized entry and stuff.
Are those needed at, like at the road access?
No.
It's just like right around the fencing.
Under federal law, the only thing we're required to have is actually on the, on the actual compound itself.
Yeah, so anyways, any of those signs, the requirements are specified in that article there. Um, I referred to again, Article seven for the standards of specific land uses. In this case, it's section, uh. Seven point 28 and the zoning has all the specifics. Seven point twenty-eight and the zoning has all the specific stuff there, so I'd, um. Recommend that you go through there and see if you've addressed those. Appropriately.
Other than the setback, I think we have.
Uh, Article Twelve, uh, does the environmental protection stuff and you're gonna be referring to. An environmental impact study. And then the supplemental provisions, there's nothing applicable on that for Section Twenty, that's four F of this checklist. Um, site plan specialist general standards be harmonious with the Gary's Township Master Plan. I, I think you met that, although I still have health concerns, but that's. Doesn't matter. In this case. Anybody else have any? Yeah, okay, I checked that as met. Five B, be harmonious with the general objectives, intent and purpose of this ordinance. I think that is met. Any other? Uh, five C, be of such character to be compatible with adjacent conforming uses of land. Um. Is what it is, right? Yeah, that's. I mean, there's no cell towers next door. No, there, I mean, it's kind of.
Point, there is no.
Exactly, so.
There was one, we wouldn't need one.
Yeah. So I think that's met. Five C, uh, five D, be designed, constructed, operated, maintained so as to be appropriate in parents and harmonious with the existing intended character of the general vicinity. And determining whether this requirement has been met, consideration be taken to the blog placement, materials, construction, proposed structures, the pedestrian vehicle circulation, the local. Location of the vehicle or use and parking areas, and I think you've met that. Unless any disagreement. Uh, five E, not, no hazard, not to be. Not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future uses in the same general. Uh, vicinity. Again, I just make it for argument's sake, the EMF concerns and some of that may be directly with the people. That are, there's some people who live right behind it. And I know some of those people expressed concerns a year ago. On there, so, but I think you've. Met that by. The regulations that exist. Uh, five F, be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as roads, police, fire protection. Drainage structures, uh, refuge disposal, water and sewage facilities and schools minimize the impact. Traffic generated by proposed development, the adjacent properties, I believe you met that. Uh. Five G, not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment or conditions of operation that will. Be detrimental to any person, property or general welfare. By reason of excessive production, traffic noise, glare and odors. I. Is there any noise without, it's just.
Just the generator when it runs and that's it. It's the typical gen, it's like a gen, it's very typical, uh, house generator, whole house generator, so it gets about the same amount.
They'll run during the day sometime, like at noon or.
Once a month or something, yeah.
Yeah, they, they do it just like the generator, it's once a week for.
Yeah, it is indeed a generator.
Yeah, five is just a bigger one.
Actually, it's not that much bigger. It's, it actually does about the same.
Like a fourteen hundred watt or sixteen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know the watt.
And they run it during the day, not at night, so that it, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, like I said, once a month and it's just testing to make sure it's running.
Yeah, I just, I'm so very, well, yeah, we're familiar with those.
Sure.
Okay, that's five G. Met, uh, five H, not involve uses, activities, process, materials, equipment or conditions, operations be detrimental to. Natural, environmental, including air, soil, service, water, ground resources. And the, uh, impact studies, I think it's met, but the impact. Environmental things will allude to that. Um. Five I, not create additional requirements at public costs for public facilities and services. I don't know if there's any additional things that. Are gonna be acquired, so I think that's met. Five J, comply with the site plan approval standards of Section. Fourteen, four. And that's, tho- those essentially all the items we've. Anything that's in the ordinance, we basically consolidate and put in this list right here, so. And what the reference is, because you had to go back and forth. Um. Especially six A, in addition, is a compliance above standard, special land uses shall comply. Again, with the standards and regulations applicable to the special land use is identified in Article Seven. Uh, again, in Section seven point twenty-eight, so one there and that's recommend you go through, because I think there's some few things that. Might need to be submitted there. Um, determination of completing it's, I think there's still things that need feedback, so it's not complete at this point. Uh, conformity with the ordinance. Um. It appears to be, but I still defer till we get everything in and make that determination. Um. Does anybody have any general questions? This line of stuff? You, you talked about future carriers already, and then you're setting up that they could happen, but you don't know and you won't know until.
Forget approval, they know that they can do that.
Yeah, lighting on a tower you mentioned, camouflage stuff we talked about, future additions with the antennas, that's included in the other. Uh, things I mentioned. Had already. You providers Verizon to start. The environment safety studies, you mentioned that, it's class two tower. And the coverage man.
I have just one. Maybe it's a stupid question, but. Right now, this is cell signal that's gonna be broadcast off, and that's. The. What we're doing here is approving. For the tower to up. With the knowledge itself. Signal that's on there. Technology changes five years from now, would you have to come back? To change. Whatever technology is on there, or is that? Evolve without. Our input.
One of the things that we also do is we do antenna modifications for certain carriers like AT and T, T-Mobile. Verizon, when they do upgrade their, their service. We do all the paperwork and we send it into, you know, the municipality. If we have to, we're gonna like put any additional equipment on the ground. If it's just the antennas on top that we're swapping out, we basically just go in, swap it off, call, call these guys, make sure it's okay. It requires a BP, most of the time it does require building from it, but yes, we do do upgrades every, probably every two to three years.
I, and I'm not even really talking about cell, I'm saying, what if it's. Some new technology that's gonna be utilized and does that need required to come back? Or does that just get put up there is because the tower's already been approved?
Well, it sort of depends on what you mean by other technology.
I, I don't know, that's.
The only other, the only other technology that's really have been doing up to this point. Is twofold. One of what we refer to as small cells. Um, which are not appropriate for an area like this, because small cells cover a very small area. And obviously in a rural area, you want one tower to cover a large distance. Small cells are appropriate for urban areas where you can only cover small distances because of the tall buildings. Um, that makes some sense in that circumstance to do that. The only other technology change that really happens. Is the antennas. And the improvement in the antennas and what they can do. You've heard five G and a variety of other things related to it. Well, five G. Um, a five G system is created by the antennas themselves. That's what they do. The antennas are five G antennas. They create that signal. That's based on that. Um. And so they change the antennas in that case. Under state law, um. There, we don't require additional zoning approvals to modify an existing tower that's already been approved. Um, if all you're gonna be doing is just changing out the antenna.
So FCC is gonna decide. Whether you could, or environmental people decide.
It sort of depends on what you're, again, what you're talking about. For the most part, there's still a building permit required because. You know, at some antenna back in the day, the antennas were round because they were microwave a town, antennas, now they're. Flat and, I'm sorry, curved, um, and they're. They're rectangular, um, because they, they broadcast across an area. Curves so they can broadcast some wider area. Um, and. Those ones, everyone was just talking about, um. They changed over time a little bit in that respect, but mainly what they did in that circumstance was they changed the method. And the physics behind how it was developed. Um, the RF radio frequency physics that went along with it. So they just improved the antennas, what they did, um, over time.
And I, I didn't mean to digress, and I just, I was kind of curious if, if we're approving a tower.
Yes.
With the understanding of cell on there. And then you decided you want to do something else off of it. As a required, you can come back.
Not unless we're changing the, not unless we're changing the tower significantly itself.
Right, and that, and when you change the, the antennas, it is basically the concerns there or. I mean, you got the visual aesthetic stuff, but that is. That, that's trivial compared to what is primarily is the power out, out and the frequency is gonna be generating that and the, the concerns. Um, with that, and as technology progress, or basically the higher up the frequency spectrum you go, the smaller their antenna gets. Which is why, why you've got cell phones in here, because they rate certain frequencies, HF antennas, you know, the lower frequencies, they have bigger antennas. And stuff, so you could get ten, and that's why you want to see some specifications and stuff, but you have, you know, mentioned you're gonna be getting the stuff in that, those will be. Again, they got federal requirements that they gotta adhere to. Uh, for going on, and a lot of cases, you, you may be putting up duplicate stuff. For redundancy factors, you know, for emergency operations or something like that. But then you have, and, and that's part of our deliberation, taking all that into effect, they're presenting a tower for their purposes. But then we've got to consider, okay, is that, is it needed? Is it, what other means can be covered, you know, can be done by fiber optic or. Other, you know, landline things, you got the space stuff with the Skynet and all that that's going out there, it's gonna be radiating everything too, so. There's all different options and different, um. Strategies for using stuff and. Uh, this right here would not, I don't think it prohibit us from. Approving it from the future stuff, and it's always changing, but.
No, I'm not looking to do that.
Yeah.
First time around on this.
Um. With that, I can say you've got the stuff there. I, I, I will summarize that for the board to. Uh, vet through and then we'll send a letter out to you. Um, and I can, shall I send it through? Yes, Claudine for the. Right, and you've got it on here, I saw that, so, uh, and the letter will provide it to. It may come from us, but through Jason.
Okay.
And be sent, uh, to the private people and then forwarded, and we may follow, or be, in addition with an email too, with the, the same. Letter and soft copy of the, of the stuff, and then we'll provide, you'll, the minutes are posted online. Um, proposed minutes within a couple of weeks. Of our meeting here, and then those are to be voted on and approved at the next meeting.
So how soon, so for us to make the revisions that we need to make, how soon do you need them by? Cause there's some other things that we want to work on too, like the project.
Well, that, that'll be up to your, we'll get you the stuff as soon as we can. But then it'll be probably within two weeks of our stuff I got going on. I'm the one that puts the stuff together and routes and everything. And the consolidated, and I. And once that's there, then you, you can start working on some of the stuff now. And then when you get that, you can see, okay, yeah, we've got that. Oh, we didn't address that, or you send it. You know, include it to us and whatever we get the thing. Um, our. Procedures with the meetings is we normally have, our regular scheduled meetings are on the odd months on Thursdays. Um, same time, seven o'clock in the evening, but we also have the option to schedule special meetings like this as required. We used to do monthly meetings and it's okay based, you know, so we can, our next scheduled meeting is on the eighth of May. So if we get the thing out to you within a couple of weeks. And you'll be able to see that and you can start looking at some of the stuff now and provide that to the next meeting. Um. And then from there, make the determination, okay, is it ready to go? For the, um, we call it public hearing. And then.
Really like it, if there was any chance to be able to create that public hearing to be the next one.
Um, yeah, well, we need to, there, there's more stuff that we need to see and the board can.
Understood.
Make, make a determination, um. With.
We're used to, we're used to mostly the administrative staff deciding whether we've got enough material there rather than the board that makes the decision. Saying whether we've got enough materials or not. That's typically how it's done.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're, I mean, our, our township boards wants gonna have to approve it.
I know.
So it's gonna be there, but before, we want to make sure we get our. Stuff there, and I'm speaking for the board, but. Somebody else, if they got different opinions, my thinking is that.
Oh, I do.
Yeah, keep going, Tom.
I think we should be able to go ahead and schedule a public hearing. We got enough information for the public hearing right now. Um, the details that we need on the site plan, that can be done. In conjunction, but we don't need those necessarily for the public hearing. So I'd like to have us schedule a public hearing for our next meeting on May, what was it?
Eight, yeah, we would do it like fifteen minutes prior to the meeting.
As long as we can meet the, uh, publication schedule as far as, you know, so many days advance of the meeting and so forth. Um. I would say we just go ahead and schedule the public hearing. Get that done and, uh, the same time we'll get our. Requirements that we'd like to see on the site plan. To the, uh, to the clients and, uh. Let them get back to us and then we'll have. All our ducks to make a decision.
We'll provide you with as much material immediately after this meeting as we can. They, we obviously took notes in connection with this and then we'll, we'll coordinate with you, what you sent to make sure we've gotten everything.
Yep. If the public hearing is just. Usually it's just to take inputs from the people and not actually respond to them on the site, but then we discuss. In our media filings, so. The fast timeline is we could do, in fact, we could do a motion, I can write it up here. Um. That this is sufficient for, meets the preliminary, uh, site plan review. Mm-hmm. A requirements and to schedule a public hearing, and then we'd have the public hearing next time in the eighth, and then we would. Schedule the final. Site plan review. For that meeting on the eighth as well.
And that include, that includes a special man use permit. You guys make a recommendation to the.
We make records to the, to the, to the regular board, right.
In addition to site plan.
Right, and what we have done before, when you can do it here too, is that we'd have the public hearing to our preliminary hearing. Or we've done the preliminary. After the public hearing, it, it, it's kind of a. Sequential thing that technically you could, I think. Go to the, I have to review the procedures actual, but. After the public hearing, go to the. Regular board. And get their approval that they need. The preliminary, but we can, if everything's all, you know, done in a row, and you've done a lot of. Stuff already upfront and some of those things. Uh, will be conditional after the fact with those other reports is that, um. We could. Make the recommendation after the next meeting that we'd call the final. That our recommendation could be for the board that we've had a, a public hearing was met. We satisfy the preliminary as well as the final site plan. Review and then go to the board for their. Meeting in, in, in May. But I think there's.
Yeah, ideally, you. The client, if you could have your revised site plan to us. By that meeting, May eighth.
We can.
So we can review that, we can, we can, we can move things along, but so. Ideally, the faster we get our requirements to you and you get back to us, the better. We'd like to have everything a week before the meeting if possible.
And if you're looking for. The board approvals, uh. Before the, because the next meeting we'd have, normal meeting would be June. So we'd have to have a special meeting if you wanted this dealt with. Before.
Yeah, Wednesday is yours is the second of.
Our next after.
It's the Tuesday before.
Before that, or that, we'll have our regular board be that Tuesday before the third, May, May eighth. So our next meeting is, uh, work session would be. And we'd wanna. I would assume talk about it at a work session before we.
Right, so it had to be.
Unless we have a special meeting where we discuss it and vote. Uh, and that would, and we could do that in May, but it'll be, it'll be a special meeting, we have to coordinate that, and I, I would say. I don't know if you wanna have me. Set that up with the supervisor. Based on this conversation, if you want to wait till May eighth, have, see what happens at that meeting before we do it, that's, I guess I'm looking for.
When did you guys want to start construction? What was your time frame?
Tomorrow.
Now, seriously, yeah, so you wanted to start.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, that's, I was being facetious, but yeah, that's exactly the case. Uh, the sooner we can get started, the better. We have certain construction windows, as you probably know. Um, in terms of what we can do and when we can do it, the Indiana Bat, Adelina, that was just one of the first things that limits our construction schedule. Um, because we can't do it when they're nesting. Um, so there are various things in which we've got to do to make sure we get within those windows. And the sooner we can get into ground or getting started. Uh, the more likely we are to make those windows and not have, have any delays in construction. So, yeah, as soon as very possible, so. So yeah, as soon as very possible. So if we could have that special meeting in May eighth. See what happens and then set it up for the township board meeting after that, depending upon what happens at the May.
Yeah. The, the, the meeting on May eighth would be the public hearing and referred to as a regular meeting. On the eighth, but I think the township board meets that Tuesday prior to the eighth.
Yeah, it has to be.
And, and their work session is on Thursday prior to that. So if we did it, we could potentially move our regular meeting up to the week prior to the, it's essentially the first of May. And stuff, which means we like to have the feedback by, you know, week prior, which means they have to get the other stuff.
May first is our board meeting. For some reason, that's where.
Okay. It's not.
Our board, our May board, board meet, work session is May first.
Yeah.
So I, I think you should just go ahead and have your meeting on May eighth, like you're planning.
Right.
And I, I, we could probably schedule a special meeting for the board sometime right thereafter. Depending, I mean, I can make those arrangements now or I could wait till you tell me May eighth.
That's, that's I guess up to the board, but I make sense to you, you know, talk to the supervisor and preliminarily have something set up and then it's with your required posting time, you're, you know.
Yeah. But I will tell you this, I, I don't like posting that 18 hour. It's like, you know, we're, we're going to post a special meeting to decide this as the board level. It's going to have to give enough time after the eighth to let the board digest it, talk to constituents. And then, you know, and post it for a week so that people, I don't want anybody to accuse us of.
Yeah.
We're in a hurry, but we don't want you to make.
Right. And we're not, yeah, we're not going to and.
Time you need to do.
Right. And I'm probably the, you know, the one that's raised the flag, the current most, and most people won't, won't raise, but I see this is it may or may not be a potential hot topic issue where you may get a lot of feedback negatively from some of the public. And what I, I don't want to do is we try and force stuff through and it comes back to bite you in the rear end. It was the right thing to do to approve it. And then people have legitimacy, you know, we're trying to be open and also do things in a manner that gives people time to respond and react and not do things that all of a sudden it's, it seems like, hey, you've hidden stuff and you ramrod it through and that, that brings up whole nother issues and distrust in the people that we're serving.
That's in our, our interest as well, obviously.
Yeah. So it's, I want people to.
Not following technical notice requirements is one of the ways you get projects.
Yeah. And even in the notice stuff, you can still do it. And this other area up here, it's unique too, because you got a lot of residential people or a lot of people that are summer homes only, a lot of people that are case in points, a couple of people on the board that are down. Not here right this minute, because there's.
Can I interrupt again? Can I interrupt you? We're overthinking this a little bit. If you want to schedule a meeting for the board, just schedule it. You can always cancel it if it doesn't work.
I agree, Tom.
But let's move on, guys. We're, we're overthinking this. We need to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll write a motion up here to for the approval of. This is normally, can I ask you a question? How long does it take to normally get from start to finish? How?
Need construction?
Yes.
The usual tower can be put up in 90 days. Start to finish. If you don't get any delays caused by any other circumstances you don't expect. That, you know, most of, a lot of the work involves just simply the site preparation of the site. The actual tower goes up pretty quickly. It's assembled, you'll see it brought on flatbed trucks, the pieces will be brought in and assembled at site. Right there at the moment, it's literally like a barn raising, it's a pole raising and it gets done all at the same time. So that, the actual construction of the pole itself on site is very simple and quick. The preparation of the site for all the things that go along with it, the bringing in of electrical, the bringing in of the propane tank, the development of the, the cabinets, the provision of of this, even, even things like the fence or things that have to be done ahead of time. And the big thing, of course, is ordering steel. And that is steel that will be used in the manufacture of the actual pole. And right now in particular, that can be a bit of an issue. So hopefully do this at a time when all things, all of this is settled down and we can get steel for purposes of doing it, but I will tentatively tell you 90 days if nothing goes wrong.
So, so then we approve, and once we approve this to you that it's a go.
Oh, yeah. The next thing will have to be done, we have to order the steel. We don't order the steel until we've got our approval.
Okay.
We'll order the steel, get that manufactured and that'll take a little while. The actual construction from there, while that's being ordered and being manufactured, we'll prepare the site itself. And then hopefully the structural steel will be done by that point and then that's when you get to their 90 day period.
Perfect. I'm just going, I'm writing.
Well, I was hoping that you, that's like I said, that's a, that's a, that's a typical schedule and a best rule of thumb. Every site's unique, it has its own issues. And whatever that issue may be can and sometimes will delay what you wanted to do as far as construction is concerned.
And you, you're, you're the same crew build all these towers.
Actually, we've got a, a variety of contractors in this particular case, because we're building, we write, White Rock are building it according to the Verizon specs. We'll use a Verizon approved contractor for purposes of doing it. Sometimes it will be a Verizon supplied contractor. Or it'll be our own contractor who's been previously pre-approved by Verizon. It'll probably be the latter in that case.
Well, I haven't seen any Indiana bats, but I did see a Michigan snipe out there.
We'll go snipe hunting out sometime and go find it. Okay. Now it's a, the problem with the Indiana bat hasn't, that really doesn't have to do with the fact of it, of the sighting of it. It's that, it's an area whose configuration, natural configurations are conducive to the habitat and breeding of Indiana bats. They may not necessarily be there at all. But you still have to act as if they could be there, therefore you have to do it. Like for example, there will be, there will be a window that we will not be allowed, you know, clear sites, clear trees and the like at that point, or even affect trees at that point. Because they could be used by, I use the Indiana bat because it's the one that comes up most often, but there are other other creatures. We have to consider in the process of putting out these things, but the Indiana bat has been the one that everyone focuses on because it's the one that affects the trees for whatever reason. It's just gotten to be the personal bugaboo of the people on the engineering department, the construction departments. Anyway. So you probably won't see any Indiana bats, but we have to act like they might be there.
Okay. I'm, I'm reading once for content. And feedback. Okay. Move to approve that the proposed site plan for the tel site wire, wireless communications facility be located to be located at 9565 North Cut Road, Reston Common, Michigan. Forty six five three, parcel number seventy two, zero, zero, four, zero, one, five, zero, zero, eight, zero, three, two, zero. Fills the requirements of the preliminary site plan review and that a public hearing be scheduled as soon as possible.
That's your motion?
Tom, you okay with that?
You unmute.
Yep. It's okay.
He's our chair. Yeah. You going to make that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion is to approve that the proposed site plan for the tel, tel site wireless communications facility be located at 9565 North Cut Road, Reston Common, Michigan, forty six five three, parcel number seventy two, zero, zero, four, zero, one, five, zero, zero, eight, zero, three, two, zero. Fills the requirements of a preliminary site plan review and that a public hearing be scheduled as soon as possible. Perfect. And the motion's been made by Brad Gibson, seconded by Jim Anderson. You know, in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed. Passes.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for your presentation, guys. Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll get you the materials as much as we can.
I'll try and get it to you, Fabi, in the next week and a half. I got some other pressing things to do.
Make sure we've gotten here, everything we can. We appreciate it.
The other stuff that we can do.
That we already know.
Yeah. Sure.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Six A is done.
We take a five minute recess?
Yes. Five minute recess.
Your board meetings are fine. It's the work sessions can get long.
Oh, they do. Boy, yeah.
Those are the records. The work session was like three hours.
I stayed for almost two hours of a work session and then I figured you damn that one.
Your name came up after you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I was, I'm like, hey, morning. Yeah, I'm on Tuesday, but it sure is. I've been holding seven years, but we had the shortest green fiber, fifteen in. I could not hold. Fifteen, I mean, staff fifteen.
For all living is the one question.
Total question. Yeah. All I need to stop.
Twenty three seconds.
We're, we're back in session. Next is on our list is short term rental ordinance, draft ordinance and information documents submitted to the Gears Township Board for their review. And Jim, you want to take this?
Yeah, I can. I had a long conversation with Tom yesterday and and I might've been a little bit in the dark as what we were supposed to be doing, but Brian or the supervisor Hill has, has not put that in front of our board yet. Okay. I think partly because he wants, he wanted to have our attorney review it before our board really try to digest it. I suggested, and I believe that he has now turned it over to the attorney as of today. So I think Tom Barber is going to be back later this month and I suggested to Supervisor Hill that we have him attend our work session. And then we can have a little bit of an open discussion. At that point, we'll know, hopefully at that, we've gotten something back from the attorney. Brian's biggest concern that so far that's come back on me is how to handle grandfather in issues. I don't think we had addressed that. He's wanting the attorney to get some legal. You know, advice as to whether we should be addressing that or not. I've had a couple little bit of feedback from the other board members, but we have not been able to sit down as a board and talk about it. It's not been in a work session. So that's what I believe, I, I'm suggesting, I think that's what we're going to do. Does that sound okay with you, Tom? Is that?
I was out of the room. I didn't hear what you said.
Basically, I, I, I said what I, you know, yesterday's conversation I had with you that suggested having you come to the next work session. Supervisor Hill has taken that ordinance, the proposed ordinance, they've given it to Scott Hess, the attorney to review. With one of his, one of very specific questions he had to do with, you know, how to handle grandfathered in issues. And so my suggestion was, why don't we at least start this dialogue with having you come to the next work session in May and just, we can at least start that at the board level and then decide to go, how to go from there.
I agree.
Okay. So that's, I think that's where we're at. So we're not looking for revisions. I, I was under impression that once it went to our board level that we dealt with the hearings and stuff, but I've been told that that's, it comes back to this board and then this board holds those public hearings. So I just didn't know the process.
Sure. All right.
Anyways, that's where we're at and I.
Any other discussions on that, guys? Well, then let's move on from that. Thank you for your information, Jim. Appreciate that. Let's go on to utility scale renewable energy facility ordinance. Set warrants we, we had and information documents were submitted to the Gears Township Board for their review. And we've also reviewed some of ourselves. I was told that that's going to be on hold for now.
Well, what in my report to them was a question of what are our priorities here is we've already experienced. we've already experienced, we have two hours that we've spent on just one issue and this board's being taxed with, uh, I, what I think a lot for what you're for, for the job. So, um, I asked them, which was, what's more important, the septic issue that's been put in front of us or the renewable energy? And, uh, if we had to start working on something, it was pretty much the consensus was start working on the septic. And the renewable energy, uh, can be dealt with if somebody comes and tries to apply for something, then I guess we have the opportunity to go deal with that at that time, but, and I think we should circle around and, and look at that ordinance or and ordinance, but right now, uh, put it to the back burner of the septic. And that's what the direction I got from the Gerrish Board.
Okay. Should we, um, do a motion to table it for now and just until we hear from the township board?
I don't know if we need to table it, but I think we, we need to prioritize. I get, you could officially table it, but it, I don't think you're gonna one of two things gonna happen that would, would start this process again. Somebody applies for one or the board, you know, we, we actually get to a point where we've got nothing on our plate.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking, take it off the agenda, because I just get tired of looking at it, I guess.
Right. We can, we don't need a motion, I don't think, Tom, to do that. We've done, I mean, because the septic ordinance, we've, you know, off and on about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just put in the minutes that, you know, here's the items we discussed. Here's where it's at. There's no, no further action this time to be tabled until later.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Any other discussion on that? Guys? Thank you, Jim, for that.
You're gonna really thank next.
That's three topics and, and no questions.
So far, so good. Uh, but master plan review, that kind of scares me. Uh, the update, uh, is review of the master plan chapters one through three.
Put that off? Well, here's I, I talked to Mike, uh, briefly before we started the meeting and I, I did do my homework. I spent a good part of a day reading through the first three chapters, highlighted them. I noticed Mike Briggs' notes on his, um, and after I did that, I, I, uh, went in and talked to Supervisor Hill and I said, you know, this thing was written originally in two thousand and seven. It's been updated, but the statistics in the back are literally twenty years old. And, um, the, at, at what you've got going here on this board as we experienced tonight again, um, it would, this, this is a huge task to be, to, to put on this board in this timeframe. It's expected to be done even by the end of the year. And, uh, so when I, I talked to the supervisor and, um, his first answer, he said, we should go back to discussion of farming this back out. Have us work on it from a ten-thousand-foot level and hire Nemco or somebody like them to give us a fresh new, uh, plan. The, originally, when this was brought up by Tom Barber to Brian, when he, when he had a discussion, it was the, the issue was that we already were in the budget process and there was no budget set aside for that sort of expenditure for this upcoming year. And there still is. But the, uh, one thing that did occur is that, uh, the road commission originally gave us a, a sixty-some-thousand-dollar quote for our cost share on the roads for this upcoming year. We budgeted based on that and when they came back last week with their final proposal, it was only, I think, nineteen thousand dollars for our share for the township. So we believe we have the ability to, uh, make it an amendment that would shift that, some of that money into the planning commission and take care of, of, uh, this. So this is, you're still gonna have to deal with it as a board, but you're not gonna be dealing with the minutia of trying to pull those appendices and stuff, all that information, because it's, I think it's quite overwhelming. And, and, uh, at least from my perspective, I get paid to be here every day during the day. You guys don't. And I just don't, I think this is the, the right approach. And those guys are experts on what's new and what's needed and what's, you know, legally needs to be in there. And I just, uh, unless you guys really wanna do this, I, I'm offering a, a way to allow us to have that heavy lifting done by somebody else.
I think we lift a lot already on this board, so if we could have somebody else help us lift that, that's.
I don't know. You've been on this for a long time.
Yeah, I did.
So you were here when the first one was done?
When in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen.
Okay.
And I've got the stuff and actually, we, we, we use that checklist that I handed out before.
Yeah.
Is to determine whether or not we needed to do a full one.
Right.
And the conclusion there was basically you felt it was complete the time. There were a couple of things, you know, in the appendices and some demographic things that could be updated, but it wasn't, um, needed to do a full one at that time. And we, we look at each year. So my recommendation based upon that, it's good to hear, is that we still, and don't do this tonight, but we still go through the checklist that uses this as the guide to say, and this would be the justification for doing that. And here is basically, some of these are generic top-level views, you know, has the things changed or whatever? And I went through again today and went through, you know, like I identified the specific.
One of the first things I noticed when I was going through all that, first of all, you know, the references in those first chapters refer to books that were written in nineteen sixty-something and nineteen eighty studies. And then when I looked at the appendices, it's got, you know, the most current is up like to two thousand and it's, we're talking about projected
The twenty-twenty.
To projected population into two thousand and twenty, which was way off because it was looking at this and it really went like this. And the other thing that just stuck, stuck in my mind that it doesn't really address in detail, which I think is very prevalent in our township is the second homes. You know, the population may not be there, but the homes are the, the properties. And that doesn't really, I don't think it really delves into that as deep as it probably should on the, on the, uh, you know, geographics of our, our community. And so I don't know, I, when I talked to the supervisor and he, he offered that as a solution, uh, I, you know, I just could have kissed his feet, you know, because I just see this as a huge undertaking and I, there's people that do this every day and.
I mean, that's a full-time job and I know, because I'm doing the preponderance of the, the stuff and writing and putting.
And I think, you know, the knowledge that you have that could be offered as they're putting this together would be, uh, great. Because then you're able to look at it from a, from a bird's eye view instead of being stuck in the mire, trying to, trying to come up. It's really hard to see the forest through the trees, but, you know, so if they're providing this statistical information and we're looking at and working them up with, um, with our own, uh, viewpoint of what the cause and effect or what, where the trends are, it's a lot better than if we, we had to sit there and come up with this information. Because I was originally thinking, well, jeez, I've got some downtime. Maybe I can go through the appendices and try to update all that. And then I just realized this is just huge. And it's not even my expertise. That's the other.
And that, and that's, I mean, just fill out the sheet here and put in the notes that and my recommendation is this, next meeting, we just go through this and formally identify those things that we then write up as justification that would go to request the funds for that. And, and the stuff here, just off the top of my head, like, like the housing stuff with second is, we've, we've experienced a growth of housing up here and the place has gotten a lot bigger and what, what.
I, and I agree with what you're.
And, and it's like you got the septic system source stuff that's an issue now. You've got the environmental stuff, the lake, you have to help human, the Higgin's Lake study. There's all these different things that are out there. You've got, um, the PFAS stuff that's going on. You've got developments in railing. You've got this new electronic warfare range. They want to do a camp railing, low-level flights, a new low-level thing to fly over in surrounding counties that may even come over the lake here. And I, I know there's no one that's supposedly going to affect. And you got drones and stuff. So there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of issues out there, new things that are out there that we would just, we even go through and study them. We just list those as bullet points of the new things, a particular area. And each of these other areas, there's a handful of things you can say. Yes, no, here's the things that have changed since, and then write a summary and then a proposal, a record, a motion from the board to recommend to get approval and that's justification. Or that's our.
And I, I, but I do think in the meantime, if Tom Barber wants to start dialogue with the proposals of who could do it, like Nemco or whatever, that you still should at least have that legwork done.
Yeah.
So we don't have to wait another month, you know, to, to do that. I, I don't, uh, I think we already know, we know the answer before you go through the, this, this, these steps. And so because I think, you know, I think a lot of the information that's in that master plan, uh, is still very relevant when you talk about protecting the lake and the generalities of that. And I don't think you want to get too detailed in, in, in that because you don't want to lock yourself in. But, uh, I think, I think having it done professionally from an outside source is the, the way to go and we're gonna be better off for it when we're down, down, down the road. It's been too long since there were, you know, a complete rewrite has been done. So, yeah, we could do that. That's up to you guys if you wanna go through, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't need to go through a whole lot of steps to know that we need it, but for the justification, you know, I don't think, from our board's perspective, I don't think it's gonna be a hard sell at all.
Yeah, I mean, they've got some, but do they want some for the record? I mean, you, yeah, we can just make an easy motion right now. Hey, we've all looked at it.
Well, but I, I don't. Just by the fact that you haven't done a, a full rewrite since two thousand and sevens, when the first one was done. You've done updates since then. You've not done, it's
Right.
It's been eighteen years since you've had an outside full rewrite, I think. I mean, I will.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I, I'm in total agreement with you, Jim, that I don't think we need to get involved with this, but I have a different take on it. I, I think that so much of this stuff hasn't really changed. And I guess I was looking to hear what Tom had to say about this, because I think he was involved with writing it in the first place. And there's a whole bunch of things in here that I'm reading that are called goals and objectives. They're the same goals and objectives we have today, really. And, and I, I'd like to know what we do to get the goals that we set years and years ago accomplished. I mean, I, I don't think that, that we really have a mechanism for going after that. So I, I may think it's wonderful to have a master plan and I think a lot of these things are applicable today. And I think we've gone ahead and made new ordinances and things as we thought they were necessary. And yeah, sure, maybe there could be a complete overhaul of this thing, but to me, it just looks like a lot of the same stuff that we're talking about today was what they were talking about twenty years ago. I mean, what, Tom, what do you think? You, you were involved with this before. How has this, uh, happened in, in this way? Or what was the discussion at those previous times about what to do about this and redoing it?
Well, here's my thought. We need to make a decision that we're just gonna redo the plan in some shape or form and we're gonna hire a consultant to help us through the process, because that's how we did it before. We had a consultant that led us hand by hand. And what we did is we created this thing for our township. Um, quick story, what we did was we redid the zoning. The zoning was totally crap. Um, it'd been amended so many times. So we redid the zoning and, and when we got through that process, then we took on the master plan and, uh, and took another year to get that done. Greg's right. A lot of the, and I think we all realize that fifty percent of what's in there in narrative form is, is correct. It hasn't changed. The numbers have changed a little bit, the dates and stuff that, all the statistical stuff's wrong and statements that are made twenty years ago don't don't, uh, you know, make any sense now. So my thought is we agree that we, I don't think we need to do the checklist or anything at this time. That checklist will come into play when we sit down with the consultant and we tell them what we want to see in the form and what we don't want to see. In other words, we control the process. The stuff that's existing now, like Greg pointed out, and, uh, and I'm sure you all read and, and you thought the same thing about the sewer, the septic, the lake and uh, just the overall quality and the way of life and everything still belongs, still true. And we'll make sure that's in there. But what I'd like to do is take, um, take our plan and meet with, or have, uh, two or three potential consultants meet with us as a board and explain what they would do, what, you know, they're gonna analyze what we got. We tell them what we want. I'll give them an overview type thing when I talk to them and then, uh, they would come to us and present and we pick the consultant. That's what we did back in the day, um, to get the process rolling. Because we actually had a consultant come in and he literally had a plan in the can and all he did was change the names and some of the numbers and stuff. And it was so obvious what he was doing that we, we didn't hire him. The guy we did hire, he actually listened and wrote the thing that you read today. And I think he did a great job of discovering who we are and, and articulating it. So that's my thought is, uh.
And that was the person who rewrote the ordinance that we had to re, rewrite on the zoning too, right, Tom?
Yeah.
I can't remember his name, but it was the same guy, I think.
Yeah, Mark Idelson.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I thought it was pretty funny. I'm reading these things like, here's a goal from however many years ago. Guide future development in a manner that assures land use patterns compatible with public facilities. And then there's fourteen objectives as to how to do that. Next goal, maintain Gerrish Township as a beautiful, quiet, up north rural community. Five objectives. Goal, maintain Gerrish Township. I mean, they're all the same things as we'd want today, really. I, I don't know that there's all that much that needs to be changed, but certainly if someone does it for a living, they can point out the things that we could look for all day and still miss some of them. So, anyway.
Yeah. Well, I think we'll have a rewrite, but you're gonna find ninety percent of, or not ninety, but a, a large percentage of what's there will still be there.
Right.
It'll just be presented in a, in a newer format.
So I guess we're all agreeing with you, Jim. We don't need to do this right now like this, so.
I'm just, I, I just think we'd be doing this for years before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, that was the reason in two thousand and nineteen, we looked at, yeah, there's changes, but it's so comprehensive. If you're gonna do it, it's not just, okay, have a couple of meetings and a couple of hour sessions. It was a lot more than that. And.
So general consensus is we're gonna table this, table this until we until the board?
Well, at, at some point, you need to tell me either today or you tell me next month or whatever, to go to my board and ask for budget amendment to accommodate us to be able to do this.
I think we need to ask your board to make a budget. So we can kinda make it get this done.
You know, what I'd be looking for would be a motion from this board to, uh, request, uh, you know, formally request the, the township board to, um, consider a budget amendment which would allow us to, uh, procure an outside consultant to assist in, um, preparation of a new updated, uh, master plan.
That's, that's a perfect.
Do you have a, a number or up to a certain number or? I think Tom, uh, had Nemco gave you, uh,
Twenty-five thousand was the top.
Yeah. I mean, there, there's work, the highest full-blown one was if, without being a member of Nemco, at that point, what you got was twenty-five thousand.
Right. I would say just make a simple motion that's, that the planning commission recommends that we rewrite the master plan. And, uh, we'd like authorization from the board to, uh, solicit some consultants to, uh, help us in that endeavor and start formulating a budget, something like that.
That's, that's a great idea. We don't really need to ask for budget amendment till we. That's, that's a great idea. We don't really need to ask for budget amendment till we authorizing us to, to, uh. To procure or to, um.
To solicit.
Solicite, uh, the bids or quotes to do the, the job is really what we need. That's exactly right.
And, and you do that before the board's approval or you do that after the boards?
We're going to want the board to give us authorization to make the solicitations. So that's really what the motions, because Tom's got it right on the end. We don't need to do the budget amendment until we.
And then we do the solicitation and then we, we, uh, we'll receive the quote and then.
The board, the township board will have to approve that expenditure before we make it. So once we have the solicitation and we say, this is the one we want. This is the, our board will then digest that and then make a decision to allow that. And at that time, we'll make the budget amendment. That's, that's the, the perfect. Yep, chain of events.
Mike's running up in a. You're running one up right now, Mike, aren't you?
Yes.
You know, Greg, uh, just to respond, you know, I, I agree with you that most of. The goals and objectives in there are stand true, just like they did before. It's the basis for it, uh, from the appendix is, is what is, I, I think is really. That statistical information needs to be up to date. And there might be some new. New objectives or methodologies to get to some of those. You know, to the goals that we're, you know, that we want. And, but like I was telling them, and I don't know if you heard me, but you know, I always read this and I, you know, twenty years ago, they said they thought the. Population was going to continue to grow and they act, you know, voting census population, people living here actually went down. But I believe, and this is just my opinion, that the number of households has not gone down because we have all these second homes. And so there's a, there's a, uh. A demographic out there that I don't think has been addressed completely. And it's almost like it's its own set of, uh, statistics. And so, you know, uh, and, and lakefront homes would be a good example of it because a lot of those that are high on the tax roll, but they're not. Primary residents, they're secondary homes. So I just think that it's, this is, this is a great way, and it's probably the timings right to, to, to tackle this. Especially with the health of Higgins Lake Initiative to start addressing, it just kind of all goes hand in hand.
Okay.
Okay, a motion I have, um, for wording, there's a gap or two in here. Move that the planning commission request authorization from the Garrish Township Board to solicit proposals from. Uh, yeah, to update the current Garrish Township master plan. And the question is from who, the word there is.
I would just say to, to solicit proposals, not put it specific to from whom.
Okay, move that the planning commission request authorization from the Garrish Township Board to solicit proposals to update the current Garrish Township master plan.
That's perfect. I'll make the motion.
Tom, anything else you want us to discuss on this?
No.
All right.
You want to vote it?
Yeah.
Let's have a vote, vote, yes?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes, no, nays? Passes.
Once, um, we get the okay from the township board, if they okay this, uh. We'll probably should put a committee of, well, myself and, uh, two or three, couple others. You know, if anybody's interested in being on a committee to do some initial interviews and. Stuff like that. Um, I don't know how it'll work out exactly, but just throwing it out there that if you're interested in being involved, let me know.
How fast do you guys want a decision? Because we're having a special meeting Monday. I can get this on the agenda. Might as well.
Mm-hmm, might as well, do it.
If you can get me. That in, you know, our minutes on.
Yeah, proposal minutes and the, uh.
I'll, I'll, uh. See, I'll talk to Brian tomorrow about, because we're having a special meeting Monday morning.
I'm, I'm not going to get minutes done before.
No, I don't expect that.
Before Monday.
But.
After, after next Wednesday.
I, I don't, I guess with the anticipation of knowing that though, I could talk to them and have that. I'll talk to them tomorrow. We'll see what I can do. Cause I couldn't have that. Otherwise you're going to wait till, you know, May. We can just have the one. We can just have the line.
Well, we made the, I mean, just, I mean, the motion was passed and it's just a matter of relaying it to the.
Exactly.
So Jim, just you relay it, yeah.
Yeah, I just have to remember we have a. Meeting Monday.
Yeah, the board approved it, so.
All right, uh, moving on to, uh, new business. Septic systems ordinance discussion. Tom, you want to start the discussion?
Well, I, I sent you guys, uh, a sample ordinance from Torch Lake in Andrum Township. It was probably one of the more comprehensive ones because they're, they also got a, a piece of theirs where it's tied to a real estate transfer. Um, you know, you're required to get inspected when you sell your property. I'm not so much a fan of that, but, uh, just the rest of it. And, uh, so like at this point, just encourage you to go through it and, you know, figure out what you think. Makes sense and what doesn't and, uh. Um, you know, kind of like the STR ordinance, we just need to figure out. What we want or what we think we want. And then, uh. Cause we will end up coordinating some, a bunch of this through, uh, the HOH. Uh, committees, um, and I, I don't think there's a huge rush on it until we get more. Uh, statistics that they're working on, but we can, we can lay a foundation, I think. And, uh. Uh, we'll discuss it further at our next meeting, you know?
I, I can tell you this from, from my conversations with my board is, it's not likely that they will. Be in favor of ordinance that is just based on transfer of ownership.
Yeah, no, I'm saying we wouldn't have that in ours.
Yeah.
So I'm just alerting you that it's there, but that's not really what my intent was there.
So you want the board just to kind of review?
Yeah, just get familiar with that and then, uh, and write down your thoughts and then what makes, like I said, what makes sense to you and, um. I mean, you can do what I do. I just go around the different areas that, and see if they've got one, you know, and, uh. And then, uh. Uh, if it looks interesting, I, I copy it. But I thought it'd give us, like I say, at least a start to see what other people are doing and, uh, and how they're handling it. Cause the biggest thing is Greg brought up at our last time we had this on the agenda with discussion, it was. The concern about enforcement, um, you know, there's no point in having a, a police power ordinance if you're not going to enforce it. And, you know, uh. And this, and make it apply. I'm paraphrasing you, Greg, and you can add anything you want there, but, uh.
Well, there, there are a lot of problems because our situation being like what Jim just touched on, that so many, um, people own homes as second homes. A lot of those homes get passed on, um, in, um, in a state, uh, they don't, they're not something that's resold. So we, if we were trying to use point of sale, that's probably not going to work well for us. I, I have another question though, and I, I don't know if Jim, this is something you guys have talked about. It's kind of along this issue, but one of the worst places that's part of Garrish Township for septic problems is the island. And I think that there has never been a septic system pumped on the island. And I think little funny creatures live somewhere on the island because of that. Um, and it might be a good idea to try to do something to coordinate. A septic pumping for the island. And I, I don't know if it's something that the Garrish Board wants to think about, but. Uh, you know, there are people that can do that. And if you could get everybody to say that they want to, uh, to go ahead with that. That would probably, you know, at least stop a lot of the problems that we're getting right now in the lake. Um, so it's, it's not actually having to do with the septic ordinance, but I, I think that's one of the worst places on the lake. And if there's anything that, that the township could do to try to encourage something to happen, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, that, um, that actually has been, uh, subject's been discussed. And I know that the supervisors already started dialogue with, uh, like the boat club over there. And, uh, Jim Osling, I believe is, that's one of the specific areas that he's addressed. Uh, with his committee or what he plans to address as the committee gets formed. So, yeah, that is one, that's, I think, I believe, at least the conversations that I've been hearing, that is high on the priority list. That both health Higgins Lake and, uh, I know Brian's working, or at least had these discussions. Uh, with some of the people. So, uh, I'm not, I'm not on either one of those committees, but I do know that that's. That is high on their list.
The first place I'd go is to the health department. They approve all that stuff. None of that gets built without their knowledge. And if they're allowing it, then it must meet their, their criteria. Just because it's an island doesn't mean that there's water flowing under it.
Well.
There's a, you know, it's, it's. The health department is your source to start.
Well, I know that Osling's working with the health department and they're trying to, they're working on finishing all the identifiable. Um, you know, systems that they have on record and, you know, trying to get that database together. And, uh, but yeah, he, they know that the island's unique to the rest of the. Rest of the township and, and, uh, they do plan on addressing that. Um, differently and, and probably more quickly than some of the other areas.
Okay. Anybody got anything else to add to that? Cause I, I want to change the subject if I can.
Just real quick, the, um, if we're going to start doing some research on this, Michigan Lakes and Streams Association, if you go to their website, they list five different. Local ordinances out there. So you can go to where it says septic ordinances on their website and there's five examples of.
What's, what's the name of it?
Michigan Lakes and Streams Association.
I know that, uh, also, uh, Bill Carey has told Brian. Uh, Hill that he has a whole lot of ordinances that he has. Come across over the years and he plans on shipping those over. Brian may already have them, I don't know, but that's another question.
That'd be great to get our hands on those, yeah.
Yeah.
So the entire island's in Garrish Township?
Yeah, yes, sir. And they, several years ago, I want to say about six years ago, they ran all brand new power lines and some cables over to it. And since I've been up here, two thousand eleven, I think it's, there's been ten new places added on. So I think it's twenty-six, twenty-seven. Buildings on the island and, and you didn't, you had the boat club. And one other place in the, in, until like nineteen sixty timeframe, there was only one place on there. So it's been a lot of new places built and, and change over. I think there's been like fifteen or. Plus places that have changed over just since, in, in the last fourteen years or so. So that whole area in that. Open comfort area and there's been eighty percent turnover and of like the sixty-five buildings plus, you know, on land plus the. The island stuff. So, yeah, it's, it's been, and some of the question was, I heard years ago that they. One of the problems is there was a high liability cost for taking the stuff over the water on a barge if there was an accident. So that was supposedly one of the factors that was people are using that they, you know, wouldn't do it. And then talking to somebody else, I think when they did the power line stuff afterwards, he has a place on there. That he's supposedly, you know, an engineer with the, some of the geology stuff or whatever. And. And he was, it told me that they, when they were drilling through there in the rocks and some of the, the stuff that's actually under the ground, they'd have to go through. If they actually did like a sewer line or something like that, that it was really not compatible with doing that. Where that occurs or not, I don't know. But I know that there's also a Michigan or the study that precipitated from doing the deltas and all that stuff that Michigan State was doing that started several years ago. Um, two summers ago, they got a preliminary report. Came out that the islands from that, and I haven't seen the actual final published paper, the first one. But the island was supposedly attached to a point of comfort until like the mid six, eighteen hundreds. And, you know, basically when they opened up the, the cut and to send the logs down to Lake Michigan. You know, that's when the stuff kind of deteriorated. Supposedly they got evidence from the drilling and stuff around there that, that wasn't even, that was just an extension, which was. Different than what I think has been previously thought that was there since the glaciers.
All right, uh, Tom, any, anything else?
Yes. Let's go back to. This communication tower. You need to look at. I brought up that we have a conflict here. If you go to the communication class two tower. Uh, seven point two eight. I don't know if you got your books with you or not. But basically it says. The township board shall evaluate the application to determine compliance with this ordinance. And approve such application. The township board may waive any of the regulations and standards. Of this section upon finding that such a waiver is justified due to specific site conditions, natural screens, topography. Surrounding conditions, um, land uses, distances to structures. Or other conditions that justify increasing the flexibility to accommodate the tower. Okay? So that basically that statement's pretty broad. And they're talking about right there. You go on down through that section to item D, which is additional standards. And it talks about the separation distances. And there's a table there. But it says the following separation distances shall apply to the class two towers. Except that the approving body may reduce the standard separation distance by no greater than twenty-five percent. Upon finding that there exist onsite surrounding conditions and so forth. Um, so the conflict is the first one says they can waive. The standards. But you drop down to the additional standards and they put a limit on that wave for distance. And that twenty-five feet is going to equal fifty feet. And that's where I came up with, they may have to move that tower back fifty feet to comply with that standard. So the question is, does the first one override the second one? You know, it's.
Tom, when you read that, you said type two tower. Do you want to type two tower is?
It's actually over fifty feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, it is plain. And the other section.
Two towers what it is, yep. And there's a definition of it.
Yeah, class one is like, you know, the ones in the. You know, like ten feet, there's a couple of different iterations for class one, like the stuff you put in your house.
Okay.
And stuff like that.
Well, Tom, I think we should ask our attorney to look that, look at that and get his opinion.
Yeah, that might be a good idea. That's why I wanted to bring it up now before we get to the public hearing. So we might have a decision on. Cause otherwise they would be forced into going to the ZBA and asking for a variance if we. Or they. Negotiate, maybe they go back twenty-five feet. Um, Jim Osling's on vacation. Um, he should be back within a week or so, I guess. And, uh, we could talk to him about it, but.
I think he'll be back Sunday.
He'll be back Sunday? Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, I wanted to make sure you guys understood what I was referring to in the meeting there that I just came across it. Uh, I, it's new to me too, so.
So one of the, um, interpretations though, is if the board decides to allow whatever they want, they can do that, basically. If for reasons of consideration, whatever they feel are appropriate, they want to do that, they can do that.
Yeah, I mean, they got to justify it. They can't just willy nilly.
Yeah, right.
I mean. When we had the public hearing on the rezoning. The main complainer was the, I think the owner of the. the main complainer was the, I think the owner of the property right behind.
Right.
And then the guy that lives farther away. And I would suspect we're going to get the exact same group with negative thoughts at the, at the next public hearing. And if we make a decision to waive the setback and stuff, that just could fuel the, you know, the debate. So we have a little conundrum here.
Well, I think we need the tower just because Jim uh Anderson can't make phone calls from his house.
I can if I stand on my roof.
Okay.
I've seen him do it. No, I I agree. We need the tower. The tower, you know, you can justify the tower just by saying it's such a great benefit to the community. On that whole side of the lake or, you know, that, within that three mile radius, it's pretty spotty.
I I suspect it'll help.
I'm all for the tower, we just need to.
You can't use cell phone in here.
Right.
I thought that was intentional.
No.
Half time I can't use my phone when I'm in my office.
I think we, I, we all voted, yeah, we agree that we should, you know, we already all passed it. Yeah, we agree with it, so.
Yeah.
Well, we we didn't do the final approval.
No, but we did approve, you know.
But but the zoning board, Mike, isn't it true that the zoning board can make the same determination that that given whatever the instances are that are brought before them, that if they want to make a variance and allow that, they can?
Yes, but you have to adhere to the seven standards. And if you answer yes to any of the, I mean, no to any of them, that's uh, um, you have to deny it. However, some of the, a lot of, some of the things are subjective, but you know, the case of the ZBA is actually to do, you know, especially in the, the thing where there's a conflict in the zoning thing, because you can't do everything and write it up to, for all the cases. And that's explicitly why the board exists is to make a judgment call on a con- conflict of stuff between, you know, stuff in there. Um, but then again, if the board decides, if this form decides, yeah, it should be waived, then it's kind of, I, I think it's probably advisable um, to follow, you know, the procedures, even if it takes a little bit longer is as best as possible, like going before the ZBA, just so if there's any opposition to this stuff, if they, you know, use that as an argument, I mean, that's what you run into of some, and I don't know how much feedback, my son, my thinking is that you're going to get opposition to some of the stuff, and it's probably going to be the, the people that are in the immediate vicinity.
Exactly.
And and you're not going to, other people like they're using, it's not my backyard. But he, I didn't ask him, I forgot to. Um, but he kind of alluded to the answer is like, are you planning, the thing with five G and if you go to the higher frequency range is because it's higher frequencies, it's shorter distance, you can put more out. So basically you put the, the, run those systems, effectively you put towers at the distance of every telephone pole. And that's a lot of power output on stuff with everything else you got going and and things. That's where the health effects get really bad. But he specifically said that, you know, they're trying to do, you know, one or two there. But what I didn't ask him is what's your plan for, you know, around the lake? Is this going to be it for the area or do you have others and you planning putting them in? But again, they could be, we don't know what the plans of other people are putting it in too, and the broadband's showing that right now. You got all these, the, you know, this B, the grants.
Okay, I, I think you're getting off topic here a little bit.
Guys, uh, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. So uh, I mean, we're talking about the restrictions, however, who is the approving body?
You're getting, I, I'm reading.
Because we, we had, we had this discussion, the approving body uh is the ZBA.
Well, if you read this thing that Tom was talking about, it says additional, where it says about you can waive the standards based on, it says, and it's specific there, it's this township board.
Right.
Uh, exactly.
But then the other one says approving body.
The approving body is not us, it's.
That's what I'm wondering.
Zoning commission. The zoning commission can can deviate uh, uh, no, no more than twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
However, if we need the uh greater uh, exception, that would be the township.
That would be the township, I agree.
Yeah, two different bodies that are making the decision.
That's what I just was, you hit exactly what I was looking at.
I underlined it too, township board.
Yeah, but the other one doesn't say township board.
Township board is not, is not the approving body in this case.
Well, and the proving body is you, we had that argument in the other things. It's, I think it was a term that's used that could be filled in for whatever the situation arises, whether it's the planning commission, the township board, the ZBA. The ZBA could.
We don't approve. Uh, uh, planning commission is not an approving, we we can.
No, no, but for the variance, even though the stuff, we, the zone, ZBA could actually, we could override and we could provide a variance to anything in here that says it gets over.
But in this case, ZBA can only override uh within twenty-five percent.
No, I'm saying anything that's in there, you can override the stuff if there's supporting justification for it.
Okay.
But it's still, this, you get this.
But then, no.
The township board.
The township board can actually override.
Yeah.
Not the ZBA.
No, if the, if the thing is presented to the ZBA, they can override some of the stuff that's in here, but it's got to be justified. And again, it's not, it's not supposed to change some of the numbers in there. It's it relies on things where there's a conflict mostly and where it's not cut and dry. But, you know, we've approved setbacks for, you know, outside the ranges.
Here's what I recommend. I re- recommend we take it to the township attorney and see what he thinks. Um, because to me, it's not really who approves it or whatever. I mean, it's a special use, the township board ultimately approves it. And then if the client wishes to appeal it, they could ask for a variance. So you, you're going too far forward. It's the township board that's going to approve it. We recommend. But there's the, the question is, is do we have a real conflict here or are we misreading it in some way?
This might be a minor point, but is it us that should be talking about having the attorney see it or should the, the board ask the attorney to see it? I mean, if you want to, you can find an attorney to take each side of any argument. So I don't know that that protects too many people that much, but maybe that should be their decision.
It is. We don't have the authorization. We would request the township board to spend the money to consult with the attorney. Um, yeah, I can, yeah, we're peons, man.
And you handle that, right, Tom? You would, you'd make that request?
I can, yes. But I'm looking for, I just want to make sure that you got my back.
I think, uh, Tom, if you were to call Brian and set it up, you could even be part of that meeting with Scott Hes. I assume he's the attorney that they'd use because that's our township attorney. But you'd need to get going on that right away because he's kind of slow.
He's Scott Hes, he's slow.
Well, he's got, he's got a lot of stuff going on and we're, we're already taxing him with a bunch of stuff. He, he had a meeting today regarding GLUAs, so I, I would, I would recommend, and I could lay some groundwork with Brian to tell him you're going to call, but you'd be the best guy to be on.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
We need to moisture anything or no?
I don't think you do.
I just ask. Probably not. We're not spending money or doing anything.
Okay.
I just want your guys' input if.
You guys agree with that, attorney?
Absolutely.
We can't agree amongst ourselves with that language.
I think we looked up, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of confident, uh, last year, we had this conversation. What is the approving body and the, and the zoning commission is the approving body? But here's this, uh, I mean, this particular point uh says that the board can override. So the zoning can, can operate and make the decision within twenty-five percent. They can, they can change the uh, the setbacks. So, but I'm, I'm also looking right now, like, I mean, it makes sense, but I, again, probably the, the the appropriate way to pr- to move forward would be uh, to reach out to the attorney and make this conclusion.
You're right, Val. We could just do what we think is, is, would be appropriate and recommend that to the township board. And obviously we would let them know that we did that and then they could make the decision. I mean, you're right, just to keep things going, we could.
But we're talking about, I mean, we just approved them to go to the next step.
Mm-hmm.
We're, you're talking about right here is the if subject to the next meeting, we decide we recommend to go forward, that's when all this would be important. Is that right?
We, we can, we can make our due diligence before.
Yeah.
Before, so.
I think we need to broach this subject, but we're not, it isn't important until right, the next month.
Even, I think a way you could do it with the final, if, if you get to the final, say we approve a final site plan with conditions with environmental stuff and that, you could also put this as a condition, you know, we make the recommendation, if the board approves it, you know, we, they need to, it's conditional upon the board approving the variance or going before ZBA and and then having them approve some variance too. So you could put that in the final thing where you basically we do, and that's when our recommendation to the board, we do as best we can for that decision. We approve it, it means everything. If there's, here's a couple of situations that may, that you may, here's the conditions that
Yep.
that may negate it that you can consider or say thank you very much and we'll still.
Well, the bottom line is we got options. We, if we can get an answer from the attorney within the next twenty, thirty days before we have our meeting, that'd be great. If not, then we'll figure out what we want to do from there.
We'll definitely streamline the process to do it um, ahead of the time.
Yeah.
Then to do it on the back end.
I think having him talk to him this month.
Yeah.
Prudent.
I mean, in one case before we had, in fact, it was on the one that's still pending with Jim's collision. We required them to get a variance from the ZBA. They went and got that and now there's, he's still having filed the final. We still got to do the final review, but re-approved last time, I think, an update.
All right, Tom, anything else? Are we good right now?
I'm good.
All right, uh, moving on then. There's no uh, no public, so no public comment? And Jim, do you have uh, anything to say?
I covered pretty much all the subjects that I needed to. I do have a question, though, before you adjourn. Do we have to meet at seven o'clock at night? We meet in the afternoons or during the day?
That'd be nice.
I mean, I don't know why the precedent was set at seven at night. These meetings never seem to be short.
I brought up this question, I don't know, about a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
But it also, it provides, I mean, by having it after the meals, it provides a public opportunity to come.
Well, you could do that for when you're going to have a hearing, but I'm just.
But, but that's the same reason the township board does their thing. And we talked about this years ago. When I had it, it may come up, is the township board meets on seven o'clock. You know, it was after dinner, so people that could come to things after work and stuff, that was the thought, you know, back then, I think. Inconsistent, I prefer this timeframe myself, but.
I don't know, I'm on the transit authority, we meet every Tu- Tuesday morning at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, and we have, public's allowed to attend our meetings, too.
Our work sessions during the day, that's where all the real stuff happens. So when we meet at seven o'clock at night, it's, we already have, we have our, yeah, our, our motions are all pre-done and
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it gives opportunity for public to have input, but if they really wanted to know what's going on, they come to the work sessions at nine on Thursdays. I'm just throwing it out there because these meetings don't, you know, it's ten o'clock at night.
I know. I would agree with you a hundred percent, have a different time if we could.
Well, don't you people have to ride your motorcycles during the day? I mean, isn't a seven o'clock meeting more conducive to riding your bike all day and then coming to the meeting?
I want to ride my jet to the meeting.
That's a good idea, too.
And, and be legal, driving back, riding back home after the meeting, not after dark.
I, I had. I just threw it out, throwing it out there.
I, I agree. Like, I, I think like this is something to consider. I mean, I, I brought it up a little over a year ago.
I'd be for that a hundred percent.
Jim, do you find, I haven't been to any of the work session and the meetings in person in a long time, but do you find that there's a lot less people that go to the work sessions than that go to the evening meetings?
I think it's probably about the same.
Is it?
You've been to both, Brad, haven't you?
Yeah, I think they're about the same. Depends on the topics.
But yeah, you guys, you have a decent crowd here for the, for the work session.
There's usually, that's, you know, that's.
At the beginning, not at, after three hours, but yeah.
It, it also depends on the scheduling too, of the township or the room that you use for different things or different stuff.
What, what time you were thinking?
I, I'm not, I'm just thinking during the day, uh, you know, the workday, I just, you know, I'm here anyways, but that's just my selfish thinking, but I'm not used to sitting until ten o'clock at night in meetings and.
I don't think any of us are. Unless you're on the planning commission, then, then you are.
Well, we did used to, I mean.
I typically, I, I have another, I mean, I have a full-time job, I mean, but I can, I can plan ahead if I, if I'm not traveling. Usually it's.
Just throwing it out there, you know.
Um, talk to the president, maybe the president will.
The chair?
The chair, yeah.
I can't make a motion, but I really suggest you say, I moved to a jern.
There you go.
The next meeting is May eighth and uh, I make.
I just, I, two quick things.
Yes.
Just, we, we got two ZB, ZBAs that just got scheduled um in early May. And there's several more in the docket they're expecting to come in. And for any of this stuff right here, if we extend the, if there is a ZBA involved, it takes thirty days from the time it's scheduled to the time it's held. That's you, use the window, just, that's it.
Okay.
And I moved to a jern.
I'll second.
Hey. Me adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Adios.
Good night. Hey, guys.